The Menifee City Council is re-adjourned from closed session. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August.
Here.
Councilmember Furman.
Here.
Councilmember Denver.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And, Madam Attorney, do we have any report out of closed session?
There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. And for words of inspiration tonight, we have Pastor Truax from Hope Christian.
All right. Good evening, everyone. A word of inspiration, I pray, from 3rd John, Chapter 1, Verse 2. And it says, "Beloved, I pray that you may prosper in all things and in health just as your soul prospers." Very kind words of encouragement. I pray that we can all be in agreement tonight likewise. Let's pray. Oh, Lord our God, we call out to you this evening and ask that you would grant wisdom and guidance to our mayor and our city officials as they consider the matters before them this evening and in the days to come. As our city grows, we know, Lord, the challenges will also grow with them, and so we pray for them, that they would have prosperity and good health. Lord, we also ask for your favor to be upon our citizens, our businesses, our churches. May each of them prosper in all things. We pray, Lord, for the safety of our city and for the safety officers, our first responders, our firefighters, our hospital staffs, our senior residents. Watch over and keep them all from harm, we pray, Lord. And, Lord, we ask that you would keep your eyes upon our youth. Watch over all of our schools and keep them safe and drug-free. We pray for our superintendents, our principals, teachers, aides, custodial persons, and all the efforts that inspire this generation for good. We ask, Lord, for your hand to be upon our country's athletes and the athletes from all around the world as they compete in the Olympics at Sochi. And finally, Lord, we pray for the men and women in military around the world and for their families here at home. Bless them. Bless the city of Menifee. May it prosper and be healthy. And, Lord, bless America, we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Furman, would you lead us in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a presentation this evening from the Boys and Girls Club of Menifee. Mr. Johnson, would you proceed?
Actually, I believe we have Sue Christensen from the Boys and Girls Club of Menifee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, honorable council members, city staff, fellow Menifee residents. I am Sue Christensen. I'm the board chair of the Boys and Girls Club of Menifee Valley. I've been here before. Do I have to do something, or no?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Join the club. So I've presented a couple of times to the council, just giving updates on the Boys and Girls Club and where we stand and how we're progressing through the requirements, legal requirements, and just getting facilities and things like that. The last time we met here, there was some discussion about a possible partnership between the Menifee Boys and Girls Club and the city council in a funding option. So I want to address that tonight and give you a little bit of a lead into where we are right now. I should start off by saying I found out it's your birthday, Councilmember Denver. So happy birthday. I want to start off by introducing our board. We have some new members and we have some people who are no longer on our board. I'm the board chair. We have Bill Zimmerman, who's here tonight. We have Lieutenant Charles Gien, who's here tonight. We have Bob Deistermars, who's also here tonight. Superintendent Steve Kennedy of the Menifee Union School District, he was unable to attend tonight. Superintendent Jonathan Greenberg was also unable to attend. He's ill. Pastor Ryan Sharp from Generations Church. Steve Glynn. Eric Cronky, who's in the chambers tonight. Paul David, who I believe will be here. Jennifer Walker from Ryland. And Bill Ackerman, teacher with the Menifee Union School District. So we have a pretty good board belt, community leaders that are all marching to the same direction, and they want to see this come to fruition. So where we stand. Really, we're ready to launch. We have a facility in place. We have transportation at our disposal. We have a long, long list of volunteers ready to proceed. We've got a lot of furnishings. We had a day where we gathered donations from people. So we're pretty well on our way to getting there. We have one major roadblock, and that would be funding. So we seem to have almost orchestrated this club in reverse of how most clubs are formed. Most clubs are formed, they start very small, in a room somewhere at the side of a school or something like that, and then they try to struggle getting through. We have, and I attribute this to the board and the members of this community, we have many of the things that most clubs don't ever realize in place, and we haven't opened our doors. So the key to getting this done is to get the funding. Up to now, we're board volunteer involvement only, and we're a board of 12 working people full-time. So we can only get it to a certain position before we need to hire somebody to take over this full-time, and that's where we stand now. Everything is ready to go. We just need to get an executive director in place and get them in the door. So Boys and Girls Club of America has some funding requirements in order to even post for an executive director, and they are that we have a bank balance of in the range of $140,000 to $150,000. We're not far from that now. We have a grant from Boys and Girls Club of America that's a $40,000 grant. It's a double matching. So they've given us $20,000 already. Once we achieve $80,000 in addition to that, they will give us the other $20,000. We have a donation from Supervisor Ashley of $40,000. That check is ready and should be in the mail shortly. That leaves us a variance of $60,000. We have fundraisers planned, but they're a little further out than is feasible for us right now to get this job posting going. And we just think that this is a wonderful opportunity for us to partner with the city in serving the families and the children of the community in a way that they've not had an opportunity to do. So that's my presentation, and I would hope for your support in this.
Mr. Denver.
Are we allowed to ask questions, Mr. Mayor?
I believe you can.
If we were to, if, I think the purpose, besides bringing us up to speed, is for you, is you're asking us for some amount of funding.
Right.
Did you have a number in mind? $60,000?
That's the shortfall.
Did I hear you say that if that somehow you got that money, that every year you would require that?
I cannot say that. This is a one-time request of you right now. I did not ask for further funding. This is to get us our doors open.
So then, what I hear you say is that you have funding mechanisms in place, at least in your mind, so that ongoing, you will be able to continue funding. You just need to get started up.
Right. So part of the executive director hiring process is to have them then have a full-time job in making sure that the club functions, it's funded, they handle the fundraisers, they handle the pricing, they handle the programs. All of those things are put in place by that executive director.
I think this is a great idea. I certainly support it. Asking our city manager, is this funding even available, possible? Could we make a decision, or is this?
Can I interject? Just be, we have this as an agenda item.
Right.
Further on the agenda tonight. So I think that, before we talk about specifics, general questions about the business plan from the presentation, I think, are in order, but we'll discuss others down the road if we can hold off. Mr. Edgerton.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate you, Sue, on a very worthwhile quest.
Thank you.
This is a 501(c)(3).
Yes, it is.
Good cause. We have many 501(c)(3)'s in the city. Good causes. Your answer to Councilman Denver, clearly, the last time you came in, you said you wouldn't need any money from the city. You were quite positive about being able to raise the money that you needed, but that a partnership might be something we might want to do. We're now looking at an executive officer between $140,000 and $160,000 a year.
No. No. That's the, let me just correct you quickly. That's the number that the Boys and Girls Club of America corporate says that we need to have on hand before we can even post for an executive director. The salary range is between 40 and 60 based on experience.
Oh, between 40 and 60,000 a year.
Yes, and that will be in the posting.
Outside of the grant for Marion Ashley and the other grant, how much have you raised so far?
I think our total, and I have our treasurer here, I think our total is probably in the $7,000 range, but that has been spent on expenses for doing other things as well.
$7,000?
Yeah. We've only had one real fundraiser.
So you can see, then, why, and I'm not suggesting the city should or shouldn't do this, it's not the agenda item right now, but there's no way that we cannot anticipate. This wouldn't be an ongoing amount of money taken out of the general fund every year.
I don't know what you can and can't anticipate. All I'm saying is that...
Well, that's my answer, and you just, you know, you just gave it to me.
So all I'm saying is that there is no intent on the position of the Boys and Girls Club to come back to the city. And if I can correct you on what I said the last time I was here, I did not say that we absolutely wouldn't need it. You and I were having a dialogue on your fiscal responsibility to the community, and I said, "Look, bottom line, this is a great opportunity for you, the city, to partner with the Boys and Girls Club in serving the families in the community. But make no mistake," and this is a quote, "we will do it with or without." And that stands today. It will just take longer for the people to be served.
Well, okay. So the reason I'm, we have a number of programs here. We have Boy Scouts in the community. We have seniors. We have a shortfall in our general fund because we don't have enough police. We could go down a long list of things. The other people, like the cupboard, and on and on and on, the Arts Council, they all go through our CDBG grant funding. You're asking us to start down a road, taking it from the general funds, from the taxpayer. Why wouldn't you come and propose that we help you through CDBG grant funds?
I have already applied for CDBG grant funds as well. That's what 501(c)(3)'s do. I'm advocating for the families and children of this community. I am going to try for any and all sources of funding. So based on what you're saying about, you know, all the other 501(c)(3)'s, that's entirely up to you to decide at this point.
Right.
I'm asking, and then you'll have your discussion and make that decision.
So if we chose to go the route of CDBG grant funds, so in other words, whether or not we decided to take something out of our general fund doesn't preclude you from funding you. We can, I mean, for example, I know on the RTA, I already put you on the list to get a bus, and then Marion Ashley came along and, because he has the authority, and he accelerated that, which I'm happy that he did.
Me, too.
But that's my only concern. Perhaps that should be discussed when it comes up as an agenda item.
Okay. And just so you know, I have many, many board members, and we're all willing to come up and answer some of these questions as well.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Furman?
Now, this is just a kind of a little quickie. I'm in full support. You got a nice line of supportees here, and it is needed in the community. And I'm confident it'll be self-funded through memberships and so on and so forth, and you got my total support on this item.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. I hope you'll stay around so that we can ask if we, other questions come up during, later on in the agenda, that you could be here.
I'll be here all night.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Onto approval of the meeting minutes. Madam Clerk, would you please note that I must abstain since I was absent at the January 22 meeting?
Yes, sir.
And are there any changes to the minutes from January 22nd? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Onto, are there any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir, as posted.
Very well. Onto public comments. First public commenter, please.
At the last meeting, I asked the city council to look into the exorbitant amount of money the city attorney charges each month on the warrant register. The city attorney tried to rebut my request for some mumbo jumbo about she knew that I was referring to a public records request of her billing that was redacted. I don't know what she was raving about, but my request had nothing to do with public records. In her attempt to misdirect the city council, she continued her mumbo jumbo, saying, "Per the Brown Act, those billings of $45,000 for October and November were not to be shown or released to the public, but the city council members could look at her billing but could not make copies. I see why Willem I got rid of Mrs. Biggs. You don't need a city attorney who continues to suppress public information under the guise it would be a violation of the Brown Act to release attorney billing to the public. Anyone with half a brain who reads the Brown Act, no, it is not a violation to disclose the city attorney charges. Under the Brown Act, the city can release the name or subject of the billing but cannot disclose the contents of the billing if it is a legal matter. Looks like Mrs. Biggs' husband's contributions to the mayor's campaign were the reason the mayor insisted on hiring her. And while on the subject of the mayor, he owes an apology to the citizens of Menifee for not reporting money he received from the Menifee Taxpayers Association. End result, he was fined $1,500 by the FPPC. He is also running man consulting a business out of his home without a license. That is illegal, Mr. Johnson. Better read the city ordinance, starting with Chapter 5.01, Business License and Registration Definitions. It does not matter if he is doing business in or out of Menifee, he is working out of his home without a license. Read a 700 form, he's making between $10,000 and $100,000. The mayor continues to impose home-based businesses just like his to be licensed for a hefty fee. The mayor is not above the law, and now we learn from public documentation, the mayor is in financial straits, defaulting on his mortgage, running a business without a license, and found guilty by the FPPC. I ask the mayor to step down from the Finance Committee until he resolves his financial problems and complies with all city ordinances. Don't waste the public's time trying to rebut what I just said, as I will leave the documentation in the lobby for the public to review themselves."
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Josie Garcia.
And you've all seen me here for quite a while, talking about the business, illegal business running next to my home. I'm talking slow purposely because you're slow. You're not doing anything. If you're doing something, you're not letting us know. This business is still doing business next to my home. He still has the bright lights. He still has the trucks that come in and out. They start work before 6:00 in the morning, and they quit work when, whatever time, they're finished. Now, if any of you saw my article, or the article that was in the Menifee, no, not the Menifee, the, the... Yes. If you saw that article, this man says that you all knew what he was doing and that you all gave him permission to do this. So that's why it's going to go into arbitration. I don't know. He's lied about you guys, if it's true, and he said that he's done everything to try to help us. He has humbled himself, he says. We have not talked to this man since this thing started. The man is a liar? If he's not a liar, then you can believe him that he's talked to us, and I can believe him that you guys gave him permission. Now, how long does it take for arbitration? What is arbitration? Why is he able to still keep working when we're in arbitration? Can anybody give me an answer? Or are you not allowed to give me answers?
In the last number of years since the Brown Act originated, and I regret to tell you that I'm old enough and I go back as an elected official to when the Brown Act began, there was plenty of discourse between a council and somebody coming to the mic. But over the years, they've imposed on a number of councils, particularly down here in this area, where the council is advised not to interact with the people at the mic, to the point I think they're somewhat fearful of doing it.
Okay. Well, if I'm here making complaints about him, why doesn't he need to be here to defend himself? Or that's just a voluntary thing that he comes? Like I said, we haven't heard anything from him. I guess I'll leave it at that.
Madam Clerk.
I don't know if this is helpful information, but the Brown Act basically states that if you're going to affect someone's life by discussing their property or any issues that involve them, that you place it on an agenda so those that are interested have the opportunity to come and respond. Consequently, public comments that we're not aware of what they're going to be about cannot be responded to by council, so they're kind of hand-tied. They can merely refer it to staff or make other general comments back. That's the only reason why.
Okay. Why hasn't it been put on agenda?
I believe we have a time limit on the speaker at this point.
Yes, and your time is up.
And just for Ms. Garcia knows, because we share this every time, there is an active code enforcement case going on, and it is in arbitration.
I believe...
And as you know, we can't discuss it. We can't, we're legally prevented from discussing it. So I appreciate you coming. Madam Attorney, you have something to add to this comment?
Just that it is not in arbitration. The administrative process is proceeding.
Thank you.
And that's the status.
Mr. August, did you have a question?
I do. I do. I think I've been about five meetings listening to this, and I understand the city's position, and I understand and certainly agree with what Mr. Edgerton just said. I don't want to talk about the case, but just for my own edification, I'd like to ask the city manager or somebody from planning, do we in fact have an ordinance that prevents work from starting at a certain time every day? If somebody could, at least I can learn that about the case, right? Do we have an ordinance?
Yes.
And what, what does the ordinance say?
There's a certain start date time. If it happens before that time, we're...
You're off the mic.
If it happens before the time of the start of the morning for the noise ordinance, a complaint can be registered, and code enforcement will go out and do a citation.
What time is that?
I believe it's 6:00, 7:00 AM.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Michael Garcia.
After the council meeting of, I believe, to be the 3rd of December 2013, my father and I were taken outside by code enforcement and a deputy sheriff. We again complained to code enforcement that it is not right that accurate-leak locators be able to start working at 05:45 and still have their lights glaring all night. We were told that if they started this early to call the police, and we could sign the complaint, and they would arrest Tony Falco for disturbing the peace. On the 6th of December 2013, we called the Menifee Police Department as accurate-leak locators had started working and loading their trucks at 06:00. Deputy Smith, badge number 2931, responded and went to talk to Tony Falco. Upon his return, he advised us, if we signed a complaint against Tony Falco, that we would be sued for false arrest. How can that be? It comes to find out that Tony Falco has paperwork from the city of Menifee to operate his business out of 29135 Leanne Lane. This was confirmed by Deputy Smith, who asked to see it. On a letter dated 20 December 2013 from the district attorney, who contacted a representative from the city of Menifee, was informed no such document had been issued, as we know that would be a violation of the Brown Act. In an interview from Tom Sheridan of the Press Enterprise, Tony Falco maintains that former city leaders, Ann Johnson, who was not the city manager at the time, were all in contact with him as he arranged to purchase 29135 Leanne Lane for his business. "The city knew about this," Falco said. So who is sitting in front of us today and was around approximately two years ago when all of this illegal planning was going on? Corruption? Dishonest or fraudulent conduct by those in power? Well, I think that says it all about our civic leaders of Menifee, California. We have been here numerous times, and the mayor and the city council act like they know nothing about this matter. All we say is in litigation, so that they don't need to say anymore on this matter. Could the reason it is in litigation be that Tony Falco does have the paperwork stating that he can operate an illegal operation on 29135 Leanne Lane with the city's permission, and now he has his attorney fighting the city? Don't we need to know the truth? Shouldn't we demand to know the truth? If our elected officials are actually breaking the law, wasting city resources to cover up their activity, there needs to be an investigation on this matter, as who knows how far this cover-up reaches?
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next speaker, please.
Ron Sullivan.
Yes, Ron Sullivan, resident of the city in Menifee. And I just wanted to, there was a meeting last Thursday on a potential moratorium that was up before this council. And I just want to personally thank John Denver for clearly reviewing what the issue was, to setting it exactly the way that it happened, how the moratorium got started, what the concern was. The concern then was addressed with the adoption of a general plan, which took that part away. And it could have been, at that point, the moratorium just disappeared, but that's not what happened. It was a two-hour meeting here that night, which I thought ended up being a poor reflection of what's trying to happen here in Menifee, because that would, the way the ordinances was reading, would have stopped any grading development in this city for 10 months. There were promises of some things earlier, but, you know, I don't, I believe in what's written. And so I'm surprised that the deputy mayor wanted this moratorium to go forward, and I don't know why. It's beyond me. It's why, because there was no guidelines for anything else, other than it basically shut down a whole bunch of stuff. And so after a two-hour meeting, and I, and deputy mayor, it's one thing to be passionate about what you believe and what you want to put forward, but in the last two meetings that I've been here, the passion has gone to being abusive and disrespectful of your staff. You have a very professional staff here, and you have a professional attorney. And I think to deride them because you believe that you are more knowledgeable than they are, which you admitted later that you were not, I think is disrespectful to your staff. And that kind of disrespect reflects on this city. And I believe that you are, you've been elected for a long time, and I think that passion has gone beyond, and I hope that there is a little bit of a change. I, myself, have been in an elected and appointed position for 29 years, served on, served on a district, served on planning commissions and airport commissions, and we have never, ever, in 29 years berated our staff in public. There's a time and a place to do that, but it's not in front of a bunch of great people like sitting in this audience. So I just wanted to say, I hope there's a change, because I know you're a, you know, you're a classy guy. So at some point, we need to be a little respectful of everyone. I thank you for the comment.
Mr. August?
Mr. Sullivan, you don't have to return to it. I was on the phone at last Thursday's meeting, and you've probably heard me say that I disagreed with your remarks, which I still do to a certain extent. I was at the planning commission meetings when they talked about the moratorium, and it was never, ever their intention to stop all grading or any development on hillsides. They took it very seriously. They were willing to give each and every property owner a fair hearing on those. There was, 10 months was really never an option. It was probably no later than. As far as I know, the planning commission said they were looking at probably getting an ordinance done to send to the council within 45 days. So I think really 10 months is a misnomer on your part, and the comment that you made at the council meeting, that because of certain people on the city council that may want to take a closer watch on development, high-density development, that no one is going to want to come and live in this city. Well, maybe people will want to come and live in this city if we can have some control over the development in the city. So those are my comments.
Mr. Edgerton?
Yeah, just clarification, Mr. Sullivan. I'm astounded at your comments...
I'm astounded at your comments. I was supporting staff's position, and I'm the one who seconded the mayor's position to continue with the moratorium, which the staff was recommending. Perhaps you got confused in listening to what you heard. I was concerned about special interest. I felt that there was special interest of being given favor to, but not by staff. It was by elected officials, and there were a number of contributions that are on the 460s involving a number of people. And you were one of them that was supporting that group and also giving money to elected officials. Maybe you should keep the conversation between special interests and the elected officials and leave staff out of it, sir, but thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, please.
Yep, we got it. All right. Mayor, council members, thank you for hearing me. My name is Michael Mudd, and I am here today with a fantastic new program. I have a sign-up sheet for what is known as the California City Council Restart Program. This is a program to move us away from the COG system. The COG system is an acronym that is for Council of Governments. SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, is a COG. It is a regional COG that was developed by an entity called the Joint Powers Authority. Who are they? They are, or were, a bunch of council members, local council members, that got together and developed another bureaucratic layer of government that implements and mandates of the federal government and institutions like that flag up there, the United Nations. We are currently working under the mandates of the United Nations. Scott Mann, last May, you indicated through a press release that you were going to do away with the mandates of big government. I'm paraphrasing here, but, you know, the Agenda 21 and so on. You were going to take out the buzzwords of our general plan, and by God, you did that. But the results of that were absolutely nil and nothing. If you were really serious about moving away from big government, you would get out of SCAG. SCAG implements these mandates. We all know this. So, why are we in this organization that mandates and dictates to our local governments, our city councils, what they will do, when they will do it, why and where they will do it? Evidence of this was found when we were finalizing our general plan, and we have consultants stand up and tell you what you're going to do, when you're going to do it, how you're going to do it, why you're going to do it. We have this institution, this type of governing, has taken away our democratic process by which we elect our local representatives. This process, this bureaucratic layer, is actually known as a technocratic system, where they are not elected, but they impose their will on our local elected officials and tell them what they have to do. We need to move away from this system and go back to the system that worked very well before the COG system was set up.
Michael, that's your time.
Thank you. I have this for people to sign after the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Eric Brown. I just want to speak about what I feel is an injustice to District Two and Councilman Furman. Ever since Julie Biggs and Mayor Mann has been in office, I feel as though Mr. Furman has been silenced, and District Two has lost their voice. And you should have been representing the people of the city, but from where I sit, I see an orchestrated, ongoing effort to malign and vilify Councilman Furman. Maybe it's dislike or plain vindictiveness, I have no idea. But what I do know is that 18,000 people lost their voice. Sorry for my nerves, it's a big crowd. When Councilman Furman was reported to Santa Ana Regional Water Board, it was after code enforcement raided the property. And it's a little interesting when you think about who could have reported it. I think I know who it was. Mayor Mann, along with Julie Biggs, acted as judge, jury, and executioner in both the media and in, well, from whatever I heard. Councilman Furman has also denied any type of due process. Instead, you were both convicting him all over the city, placing emergency ordinances and placing the blame directly on Mr. Furman. So, I'm not a councilman, but I'm no fool. Finally, Julie Biggs, I think billing the taxpayers $39,000 for an ordinance that was found to be a lie. To the council, I would highly recommend you have a closed-door session in regards to terminating your current city attorney. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
Not under your public comments section.
Thank you. Could we have someone from staff remove the document off the document read? Thank you. Give it, Mr. Mudd, give that document back to you.
Yeah, it's bad.
No, we, I, I understand what you're saying. Okay, on to council member updates and comments. Mr. Edgerton?
I had the privilege of going to Cub Scout event for the city, and we were judges. We, meaning Councilman John Denver, myself, and Councilman Tom Furman. And we had to judge their ice cream sundaes. But it was a fun event. It was a bunch of kids. I'm, I just passed 50, so I say that. These were a bunch of kids that were Cub Scouts, and it was kind of a rite of passage. They were about to become Boy Scouts. And it was a public event, but it was mostly kids from Menifee. And the place was very crowded. It was at the Masonic Lodge. And when we, when we, we had to eat these sundaes, taste them, and they kept coming, and they kept coming, and they kept coming. And the three of us were judges. And they were going to ask me to speak, they didn't, but I do want to announce that one of the judges should have got a prize. There was a prize the kids put on skits. And so, they gave a prize to one of the kids that got skits. But one of the judges won a prize, because I took a taste of all of these various sundaes, ate some of it. And Councilman John Denver ate more of it than I did. And then Tom Furman ate all of his, and then ate some of mine. So, Councilman Furman should get that prize. But I also wanted to add that at that event, the scouts and the groups of people that represented all of these scout groups all across the city and around the area asked Tom Furman, Councilman Furman, to come up, and they gave him recognition and a plaque for all the work he's done for those Cub Scouts. And apparently, unbeknownst to me, he's had many events on him at the Wooden Nickel Ranch trying to help scouting. And I really think that's commendable, Councilman Furman, and thanks for the rest of us.
Mr. Furman?
On a, on a little follow-up, that I did eat Mayor, Vice Mayor Edgerton's strawberries, because he didn't eat his strawberries. That's all I ate off of, off of his sundae. But anyhow, they did have an interesting game there. They can actually pound nails in a board with a banana. So, I mean, that was, that was quite a feat. Also, it seems to be there, there is a lot of concerns about the billings of our city attorney. So, I'm going to make a recommendation that we do a closed session on and discuss the billing matters and possibly an RFP at the, as soon as possible.
If you would hold that thought until the part of the agenda where we have council member requests for agenda items, and you get a second, we can...
I can do that.
...go down that road. Are there any other council member comments? I have one. I wasn't, I want to, I appreciate Ms. Pica raising an issue on my behalf, and I, I think that, I want to thank a previous speaker from the regular council meeting of two weeks ago as well. I believe it was January 22nd where I was absent on a trip on city business wherein Ms. Roxanne Thompson, who is the ranch manager of the Wooden Nickel Ranch, brought an issue to the attention of the public and the council and staff regarding a business license for myself, for Mann Consulting. And I have, I have several contracts that I work under Mann Consulting, and I am an independent contractor in that regard, and I'm not required to have a business license in the city with the business that I do. None of my clients are in the city. However, that notwithstanding, though, I am a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and I have been a member of the Chamber of Commerce for many years. And I think the speak, Ms. Pica and Ms. Thompson, you're absolutely correct. The mayor should have a business license as a member in good standing with the Chamber of Commerce, and I do have a business license. I have obtained a business license for the city of Menifee, which is right here, and I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that I do have a business license. And I appreciate you, Ann, and I appreciate your ranch manager, probably at your request, to bring that to my attention.
She's, that girl's on her own.
I really do appreciate that. You're absolutely right. So, I went and got my business license. Very good. All right. On to the consent calendar. We have, may I have a motion on the consent calendar? May I have a second?
Sign in.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye. We have a public hearing this evening, Agenda item 11.1, public hearing for adoption of Resolution Number 14-353, adopting an addendum to the city's certified general plan and environmental impact report, and adopt the general plan amendment to update the city's general plan housing element round five. Mr. Johnson, we have a staff report.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As promised and in conjunction with the city's approval of the city's general plan, staff and our partner, the Planning Center, filed the city's round four with the general plan and round five housing element figures right after that, which both have been accepted. Charles Leclair, our community development director, will provide the city council the brief staff report and the item for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As city managers just mentioned, this will be a brief report. As you are aware, all cities are required to have general plans. Those general plans consist of seven elements, housing element being one of them. Housing element is the only state-mandated element that requires periodic updates. Housing elements are highly regulated to fulfill many, many housing laws. They're just filled with all kinds of requirements to meet the requirements as established by the state. The California State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, is tasked with certifying that each city, each city's housing element is consistent and conforms to state housing law. While it is correct that the city adopted the housing element with its December 18th adoption of an entirely new general plan, that element was to satisfy what's referred to as round four of housing element requirements. That said, however, decisions made in that effort form the basis for the draft housing element now under consideration without the need within this element to change the general plan's other elements, such as the land use element, or to change any adopted policies or goals of the existing element, of the existing general plan. The analysis within the staff report illustrates the requirements of state law that are addressed with the proposed housing element that's before you tonight. The housing element update under consideration tonight will fulfill the requirements of round five for housing elements. Those are required to be effective for the planning period 2014 through 2021. To that end, this housing element was reviewed by the Planning Commission at a special meeting on January 22nd, 2014, where it was unanimously approved to recommend to the city council that they adopt the addendum to the general plan's EIR and adopt the draft housing element as presented. As a final note, HCD has provided a letter, which is attached to your report that you have in front of you tonight, that states that if the draft housing element now before the council is adopted, that it will certify that element as conforming to state housing It's a very complicated document, and in lieu of going through something I'm sure you've gone through in detail, and this has been discussed at various levels before, staff and a representative, Mr. Mark Hoffman with the Planning Center, are here to attempt to answer any questions that you may have. Aside from that, staff's recommendation is consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation that you adopt the addendum to the general plan's EIR and that you adopt the draft housing element to satisfy round five housing needs.
Thank you, Mr. Leclair. Are there any questions from the council to staff? Questions only at this juncture? Hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing at time 8:09. Madam Clerk, was this hearing properly noticed?
Yes, it was.
And have we received any additional correspondence regarding this public hearing?
We have not.
Very good. Do we have any speakers on this item?
Sir, one item was turned in for a speaker, but they did not put their name on it. So, I would ask of you, if you wish to speak on this item, item 11.1, and this is your form, please make yourself known so that I can call you forward.
Are there any, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this public hearing regarding this item? Someone filled out a slip and forgot to put their name.
It's Ms. Miller. I just wanted to go on record, because last time I wasn't able to, and I don't understand what an abinabdimum is. The earth dries up, languishes, and withers. The exalted of the earth languish. The earth is defiled by its people. They have disobeyed the law, violated the statutes, and broken the everlasting covenant. Therefore, a curse consumes the earth. Isaiah 24, 4 through 6. Menifee has contributed graphically to the heat coming out of California. All summer, the wind blew from the south. It blew the heat from Southern California to Alaska. It is 60 degrees in Alaska. The heat damaged the Arctic jet stream and weakened it. The Arctic air rushed through, and then the Pineapple Express has blown our rain to the east, combined with Arctic cold. Stop leaving your cars on to chat in the school or shopping center. Walk to the store. Other people suffer because of Menifee. We need tickets given to people leaving on their cars and tickets to city councils that build more housing and commercial projects. Clearly, any project will violate greenhouse gas emissions set by south coast air quality, and the closer to the freeways the project, the more concentrated the emissions will be. Then the wind howls and blows carcinogenic particulate matter into the lungs of Menifee's citizens. When this pollution connects with the freeways, it makes a whirl to the next village like Marietta and Paris, where one out of 110 children suffer autism or asthma, combined with adult smoking, and the price of healthcare will rise for everyone. You are pricing yourselves into bankruptcy when you pay the hospital costs and lawsuits for more wrecks and slowed emergency service and pedestrian accidents. It is better to be the financial tortoise protecting your citizens' health than the money rabbit gathering great gains and in the end unable to pay your vendors. So, moratorium, any more structures in Menifee. If you think a movie theater is a venue, take it to the out-of-business Dixie Line Building in Marietta, Menifee border. Find an already-used building that is still be intense traffic on Clinton Key. The percentage of conservation, conservation land in your plan is abysmal. The percentage of agricultural land is abysmal. The housing element means the city is a real estate business selling parcels it has acquired to high-density apartments every year. We can't be concerned with the greed of business people here, that you want more people for their businesses. If Menifee can't support a business, then the business needs to recycle itself. We can't stand by and watch you eliminate more River Sedian sage scrub, the native vegetation that is aromatic and medicinal. There was only 50 square miles of this plant 20 years ago. There are 59 rare and sensitive plants, including poppies, that are being built over and will not survive... not survive transplanting because hydrology and weather change is too hot for the plants in another location.
Ms. Miller, that's your time.
And 28 animals, including mountain lions. Stop building now!
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any other public commenters for the public hearing?
No, sir.
Very well. I'll close the public hearing at time 8:13. Counsel, is there any additional discussion on this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Onto our discussion agenda. Just a quick clarification from the city clerk. I know that these are two separate TUMF agreements, and there's two agenda items, but can we hear them at the same time and can we act on them at the same time?
You would act on two separate votes, but otherwise-
Okay.
Yes.
If it's okay with the council, I would like to do that. I would like to hear, Mr. Johnson, if you have staff reports on these. Present both of them, and then we'll take two separate motions.
Absolutely. The next two items are great wins for us. Jonathan Smith, our Public Works Director, City Engineer, will have the reports for you, and he'll just go one after the other, and then we'll ask for a motion and a second and a vote individually. These are fruits of our labor. This is a portion that we can slap ourselves on the back for. These are two projects that we started out our CIP program with that are nearly completed to the point where we're actually getting some funding that we put toward them reimbursed to us. So Jonathan Smith, please deliver the report.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I just real quickly wanted to give a little background on this project and how it got started. I started here about a year ago, and within my first week, we were sitting in front of a developer that was looking for, to extend their development agreement. Well, this project, it couldn't have been, it couldn't have gone forward without the leadership of the city manager, who at that meeting let the developer know that the community has waited too long for this important north-south link within our city. So that began a process where, working with Sean Nelson and myself, we partnered with the developer and with WRCOG to come up with a co-op agreement that was brought to the city council on July 2nd. But real quickly, just show you a couple photos of the progress that we've made since that time with it less than a year. Trailhead has been paved. This is looking east towards Lindenberger, and that was done recently here just this week. Simpson towards Lindenberger there has been paved, base paved. A finished cap will be made after the development is completed. And we are ready now. You see on the right-hand side here, a photo of Menifee Road looking north towards Simpson, getting it prepped for paving to start within a couple weeks. As I mentioned, on July 2nd, the city council approved a co-op agreement between the city of Menifee and El Dorado for the construction of the missing link, and the city agreed to advance $1.5 million of TUMF money to the project to get it kicked off. And this was a collaborative effort between Public Works Department, Sean Nelson, and WRCOG, specifically Ruth Ann Taylor Berger, the Deputy Executive Director of WRCOG. I really appreciate her assistance in this. So on February 3rd, 2014, WRCOG Executive Committee approved the TUMF reimbursement agreement for this project in the amount of $1.5 million, which fully reimburses the city of its investment to kick off this project. So staff is recommending approval of this agreement so we can receive our $1.5 million investment. I'm going to roll right into the next reimbursement agreement that we received. Can we pull up that next PowerPoint real quickly? This is for the Newport Road widening project. Learning a lesson from the agreement that we executed for the missing link, we said, heck, Newport Road, that's a TUMF facility. Why don't we ask for money for that? So we did, through, again, a collaborative effort with WRCOG. Ruth Ann said, sure, we can get you some funding for that TUMF facility. And with that, we executed again on July 2nd a contract to improve Newport Road through the contract with Griffith Construction Company. The total cost of the project is $3.515,77. On February 3rd, 2014, WRCOG Executive Committee approved the TUMF reimbursement agreement for the complete construction cost of the Newport Road widening project. So these dollars will fully reimburse the city for the cost of, for the full cost of the construction of Newport Road. So I'm happy to recommend the approval of the TUMF reimbursement agreement to fully fund the construction and the money spent by the city. That ends my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Furman?
Jonathan, could you go back to the first slide, please? Another one where you had to map in the red line, the very first one.
Oh, that was for the-
That's for the missing link.
Yeah, the missing link, yeah.
We'll pull up here in a second.
All right, right where that red line comes out of that housing track-
Okay.
-right there. There is a DG trail that deadends right at that red line right there. Whose responsibility is that going to be to continue that DG trail up the missing link?
The developer.
The developer's going to do that?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Edgerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this has been coming for some time, and I wanted to repeat again, as I've said several times, and, oh, and especially Mr. Sullivan, if you're in the back, I hope you're The work that the city manager has done, being quarterback on this, and Sean Nelson coming in as a specialty artist on how to get funds, and what Jonathan Smith has done, has really been a delight for this council. When this council took its place in December of '12, one of our main goals was to be concerned about Newport, Scott, possible Holland overpass. We were disappointed that the Holland overpass didn't go forward immediately, but we weren't able to do that. But now we've been given assurance that the funding is already in place to proceed with that. The missing link, for some of us, came as a very pleasant surprise. Again, that's thanks to Sean Nelson and some of these fellows digging out money from the WRCOG, some monies we didn't even know we had. So I would just say, as I've said before, and I think it's worth repeating, Rob Nelson as playing the role of our city manager, Sean Nelson coming in, did I say Rob Nelson? I mean, Rob Johnson. Sean Nelson coming in, just being our running back, pulling that money out of WRCOG, and we're always able to depend upon Jonathan Smith. He's got to come in and follow up and get the hard work done, just top marks. You guys have just been an A triple plus in getting done what we've asked you to do. And thank you on behalf of the citizens so much for a job well done.
Yep. Excellent comments, Mr. Edgerton, and I believe we all feel that way about the CIP that you all brought forward and have worked. We're grateful. The citizens are grateful for the work that's being done. The $5 million, this is restricted dollars that are coming back to us, yes? Restricted in terms of their use? Somebody can answer.
Well, usually dollars, I'm not terribly familiar with.
I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about TUMF dollars being returned to the city coffers, so I'm assuming that those are going to be earmarked, bad word, earmark, for future capital improvement projects, I would think.
The $1.5 million cannot be used again. It's already been spent on the missing link project. The $3.5 million will be reprogrammed into future CIP projects.
Okay, so the $1.5 that we were getting back from the COG, that's already been expended-
It's being expended, correct.
It's being expended by our share. So really, the net is $3.5.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. And that's restricted dollars?
It is restricted to transportation projects.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? If not, I would entertain a motion on agenda item 12.1 to approve the TUMF agreement for reimbursement for funds for Menifee Road.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Say.
Roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
And likewise for agenda item 12.2, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Onto agenda item 12.3. Authorize staff to implement a citywide approach to delivering community services, parks and rec programming for the city. And before we start the presentation, I would like, I do recognize at least one board member in the back from Valleywide Parks and Recs District. Could all the board members and staff of Valleywide please stand and be recognized? Thank you very, thank you very much for coming. Really appreciate you being here tonight and participating in this process. And I just, you know, as the mayor, I just want to make sure that nobody in this room is displeased in any way, shape, or form with the services that Valleywide Recreation and Park District have rendered the residents of this city. This is, what we're about ready to discuss and take a staff report on is a natural progression of where we're at in the life of this city. Leftover from the incorporation process, this is one thing that we never had an opportunity to address, but we are going to address it this evening. And with that said, please proceed with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item before you is a report by Sean Nelson, your executive consultant to the council, which outlines information the council has requested over the past year, not only just the past year, the first five years of cityhood. The age-old question of how the city of Menifee should engage its residents in recreational park services. Many have debated if the city should by right have the ability to operate citywide parks and recreation department, and that's not to say, as you mentioned earlier, that Valleywide is not providing a great service to the community, but it's a, it's a question of local control and one this council hasn't talked about before. With that being said, the fiscal year budget contains the community services director position, of which I'm in the final stages of hiring. And if all goes according to plan, staff will be on board on March 3rd, 2014. And Mr. Nelson has your report for you, and we look forward to a good discussion.
Mr. Nelson, before you proceed, how many, do we have speakers on this agenda item?
Yes, sir.
And how many do we have? Not that that matters, I just want to, I want to exercise the, some leeway here of the chair, and I want to take the staff report. We would like to hear the staff report first, and then we'll take the speakers. It may answer some questions.
There are six, and yes, some speakers have indicated they'd like to see if their questions are answered.
Okay, very well. Please proceed.
Thank you. Sorry about my voice. It's one of those things that I told the city manager that I haven't missed a presentation in 30 years, and I'm not going to start today. So hopefully you all can bear with me. This item is in regards to establishing a citywide community services, parks, and recreation program for the city of Menifee. And, you know, in looking at this issue, I think the very first question to ask is this: Why is it important for a city to have local control over its community services, parks, and recreation program? In my view, I think there are many, many reasons why this is extremely important. Community services, parks, and recreation is really an extension of how a city defines itself. City recreation programs, those special events, they become annual traditions within a community. They help to maintain a small-town feel regardless of how fast a city grows, and it creates a true sense of civic pride and ownership within the community. Community services also helps to establish a high quality of life, which directly correlates with higher property values for citizens. Community services directly promotes economic development, probably as much as any factor within a city. And by having outstanding parks and recreation facilities, they attract people and families who want to live, work, and play within a community, thus creating new residential developments, master-planned communities, as well as commercial, retail, office, and industrial projects. And finally, establishing a citywide community services program will allow the city to be much more strategic and visionary in the delivery of these important public services. So next, we looked at all of the existing conditions within the city of Menifee. First of all, we are excited to have offered a position for our new community services director, and as Mr. Johnson stated, we hope to have this person, this person on board within the next few weeks. We also have the Otting Murphy Ranch Sports Park that's going to be coming online as a city park facility, as well as the Town Center temporary sports fields. It is anticipated that both of these facilities will be completed and dedicated to the city within the next few months. With respect to the delivery of recreation services, the city is currently contracting with the County of Riverside to provide recreation services on the west side of the city, and Valleywide Recreation and Park District is providing recreation services on the east side of the city. So after analyzing all of these existing conditions, as well as looking at the fiscal impact, we are recommending to implement a citywide approach to delivering community services, parks, and recreation programming in the following manner. The first step is for the city to assume full responsibility of operating and administering and programming the Otting Murphy Ranch Sports Park in April of this year. This will give us the opportunity to establish all of our city policies, procedures, organizational structure, recreation programming, marketing, and branding of this new state-of-the-art community park facility. The second step is for the city to assume responsibility of the Town Center temporary sports fields. We anticipate taking responsibility of this park site as of July 1 of 2014. From a fiscal standpoint, both of these parks will have a maintenance CFD in place that will be able to pay for the annual operation, maintenance, and administration costs. The third step is to, is for the city to eliminate its contract with the county and assume full responsibility of all the west side parks, as well as the Case Centennial Senior Center as of July 1 of 2014. From a fiscal, from a fiscal standpoint, we estimate the total cost of operating and maintaining the six parks on the west side of the city at approximately $1.2 million annually. We are currently estimating the annual revenue generated from assessments and recreation fees at $845,000, with an annual general fund contribution of $342,000. However, we do believe that we can reduce the general fund's contribution once we take over the operations of these facilities by generating more recreation revenue, as well as implementing additional operational efficiencies. The fourth step is to assume full responsibility of all the east side parks. As we stated previously, Valleywide is currently providing recreation services on the east side of the city. To assume responsibility of the east side parks, the city of Menifee will have to submit an application to LAFCO, which is the local agency formation commission, to detach this area from Valleywide. As part of the detachment application, the city will have to prepare a municipal plan of services, and then LAFCO will schedule a public hearing in which the commission will consider the detachment application. In my conversations with George Spiliotis, it's estimated that the detachment process will take between six to nine months to complete, which is why we are recommending to assume the east side parks as of July 1 of 2015, which would be contingent upon the approval of the detachment application by LAFCO. From a fiscal standpoint, for the east side parks and the facilities, we've estimated the annual revenue of assessments and recreation fees at approximately $3.75 million. This estimate is based on the existing assessments that are already approved and in place. On the expenditure side, we are estimating the ongoing operational and maintenance costs of the 20 east side parks, recreation facilities, landscape parkways, detention basins, and open space at approximately $3 million, and this information was derived directly from the fiscal year 1314 engineering report that was prepared by Valleywide. the fiscal year 1314 engineering report that was prepared by Valleywide. This would leave a balance of approximately $768,000 that could be utilized for staffing and administration costs. The fifth and final step is to direct the city manager to develop a plan for the city council to appoint a community services commission as of July 1 of 2015, which will allow us the time necessary for the city to complete the detachment application process through LAFCO. So in summary, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's staff's recommendation to implement a citywide community services parks and recreation program in the following manner. One, assume Audi Murphy Ranch Sports Park in April of this year. Two, assume the Town Center temporary sports fields as of July 1, 2014. Three, assume all the west side parks and the K-Cenocero Senior Center as of July 1, 2014. Four, assume all the east side parks as of July 1 of 2015, and this would be contingent upon the LAFCO detachment approval. And finally, five, approve the formation of a community services commission as of July 1 of 2015. And with that, Mr. Mayor, staff is available to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Let's just confine it to questions at this juncture, and then when we're done with questions of staff, then we'll take public comment. Mr. Edgerton, you were up first.
A couple of questions. When you say "community services," could that be, for example, title parks and recreation? That's where we're at right now.
Yeah, usually that includes not only recreation programs, but human services, cultural programs, the whole gamut of recreational services.
So that would be a group of citizens would pull out of the community to be part of that commission?
Well, of the commission, correct.
Right. Secondly, was my understanding that if we did this, it would be, the projections would be revenue neutral?
That's really the hope. At this point, the only information that we have to work off of is the engineering report that we received from Valleywide, but it does appear that there would be some funds available to be able to pay for staffing and administration on the east side. On the west side, at this point, it does appear that there's potentially a $342,000 contribution from the general fund, but as I stated, I think we have the ability to do much better than that, both from a recreation fee generation standpoint, as well as being more efficient in the manner in which we set up our organizational structure.
Good. I thank you for the presentation, and I'm in agreement with you, we should want something under the single umbrella of this city. But I'll ask a question I probably shouldn't ask it, but it does bother me. And Mr. Johnson, maybe you're the one to answer this. I saw a lot of good people stand up a little while ago, and they have jobs. If we proceed with this, what happens to their jobs?
Well, we don't know what the answer to that is at this point in time. Obviously, the positions that they have currently working would be available. There could be negotiations between the two organizations. I think we're kind of overstepping, kind of getting a little far ahead of the game there, but that would be my anticipation.
Thank you. Mr. August, you're up next.
Mr. Nelson, it'll be one of the last times we see you up there for a while, right? Anyway, thank you for your report. Just to, I want to follow on with what Mr. Edgerton said. The community services commission will basically be comprised of citizens from the community, probably one nominated from each council member, something. Can that take, does it always have to be like that? Can it be a different format or selection process?
That's really a policy decision of the city council.
Okay, and one last question was, community services, that would include trails?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Furman?
That was part of my question, but just to make this clear for the citizens, every park that's in the boundaries of the city of Menifee now will be controlled by the city. Is that correct?
That's, that would be the goal of the recommendation we're making.
Right. Has there been any investigation about taking over Canyon Hills Park in Quail Valley at all? Has there any been anything discussed on that? It's been going back and forth for years. So if you haven't discussed anything, that's all, that's fine. And the, I see you're including the Master Trails Plan implementation system, all right? So that probably should be added, and I would like, in the name of the program, to have trails written in there also, just not parks and recreation. Let's stick the word "trails" in our title.
Right.
And in your implement, in your plan here, you're not planning to bring the Trails Plan into the July 1, 2015? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think, I think once we have the community services director onboard, the director will begin to look at the entire gamut of parks and recreation within Menifee, which would include parks, trails, cultural programs, events, organizational structure.
Right.
And one of the things that we really need is a citywide parks and recreation master plan. That's something that's very important in terms of establishing what the ratio of acres per thousand people that come into the community, and that'll allow us to be able to, be able to extract those acres as developers come into the community, and also complete a needs assessment with feedback from the citizens that tell us, tell us what the citizens would like to see, look at what we have, see what those deficiencies are, so when we do look at doing either new public works projects or conditioning new development, then now we're making very strategic decisions as to whether or not we want soccer fields or baseball fields or tennis courts or whatever, because we have a document, a master plan, that has community involvement that helps to drive those policy decisions. I think that's something that's going to be very important, and that'll be something that the community services director, I'm sure, will begin working on right away.
Yeah, well, what I think is very important here is the, we've been kicking around, and I think you just reiterated the fact that we need public input and possibly a Trails Commission. We've been kicking around a Trails Commission to help support this park system, because I think it's very important that we don't lose focus on the trail system that we already have. We, I don't think we have a really top-notch monitoring program that really watches, watches this trail system. And I would like to see a Trails Commission formed and get up to speed by the time we're ready to implement this program. And I think it goes along with what you said, the community's got to get in, get their input in to help develop this system.
Mr. Denver?
First off, I want to compliment you for putting this all together. It's taken a long time. Your involvement with our city has really been an asset for us. The money you got just on the COGS, did I hear COGS? How interesting. Gave us what, over $6 million? And while the rest of the staff has done a marvelous job, I attribute most of that money to you. But to try and not be controversial, there are some controversial things that you have not talked about, having to do with these parks. There are, as I understand it, there's different fee levels on the east side and west side. As a matter of fact, there's different fee levels, particularly on the west side, the Sun City side, that are dramatically different than the family areas on the other side. This has been very controversial for Menifee-Sun City for years, and that all has to be worked out. One of the, and because of those problems, one might argue that there's been a difference in level of activity on one side of the freeway versus another, because the fee structure's different. I assume we're going to have a common parks and recreation activity on both sides of the freeway. Somebody has to look at who's paying for all those fees, and is one side getting benefits?
Right.
You know, so you might want to speak to that, or is that something that's going to be worked out as time passes?
I think that's another important issue that'll be addressed by the community services director. There are many, many issues that are going to have to be addressed by this position. I think we're very excited about the person that can come onboard, and this person is going to be busy for many years. And I know when I'm talking about it, because I did exactly the same thing when I was 31 years old back in the city of Temecula back in 1990. There's literally a ton of work that needs to be done, and that's definitely going to be another issue.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Sean, thank you for the wonderful report. To get back to the crux of your question, Mr. Denver, there are varying property assessments throughout the city, but they're different based on how far away you are from the park, what types of parks you're near. So I think the biggest key to the whole issue, though, is that there's already a funding mechanism in place. Does it need to be worked out and fixed? Yes, but currently, there isn't something the city's going to go through and raise everybody's rates to achieve something that needs to be achieved. The funding mechanism is already in place through tax assessments.
Mr. Nelson, I want to compliment you on such a thorough report here, and obviously, I mean, you, you know, you took, when you started at Temecula, the city had, what, one park, and then you grew it into over 90 during your tenure there. So I know that this presentation comes from that experience base, and we're very grateful that you're here to give us that experience base on this particular topic and others. I would like to ask you and others, for the staff, as going forward, I don't want you guys, we keep seeing, we seem to keep forgetting that the city owns 20 acres, raw acres, right next to Paloma Valley High School, and that was...
We haven't forgot.
Okay, well, then we need to make sure it's in our report, if we could bring, keep drawing attention to it. Mr. Edgerton asked the question about Parks and Recreation Department versus community service, that was answered.
Yeah.
Does, going on to a couple of questions regarding the LAFCO process, if you can articulate them, does Valleywide Recreation and Park District, right now, have a sphere of influence, as far as we know today, that extends westward from our, to our city boundary?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I do know, I spoke to George Spiliotis, who's the executive director of LAFCO, and I do understand what the process will be.
Okay. With respect to the east side parks, are there any long-term debt encumbrances on any property or facilities currently?
To our knowledge, no.
And so if, in the LAFCO process, since it, if approved, agency to agency, would we be required to compensate Valleywide Recreation and Park District in any way for those facilities?
You know, I really don't know. That's going to be something that's going to have to be discussed. I think, from our standpoint, I think we feel strongly that the citizens paid for and built those facilities, whether they were from assessments, whether they were from developer fees, but we believe strongly that the citizens own those facilities, and this is really an issue of what's the best method for providing a citywide community services parks and recreation program. And we think Valleywide is doing a fine job, but when you look at the entire city, it really isn't the best way to set up a city, to have half of it being run by a special district and the other half being run by the city. So in our view, and especially because community services, parks and recreation, is so extremely important to quality of life and economic development, we feel strongly that we need to be at the table driving that, and the city council needs to be the one making policy decisions in that regard, in the service to the citizens within the city of Menifee.
Okay, thank you for that. Just, I agree with comments made by Mr. Furman previously. We, you know, we, the Trail Committee that we had in place is still in place, it's just dormant, and they were active when involved in the Master Trails Plan to go into our general plan.
Right.
And so, to the extent that, I heard you say that the Trails process would come underneath this new department, would therefore come underneath the community services commission once put in place. And so I guess, I agree to the extent that if we needed to have some work done with Trails, that if we need to reactivate that committee, would you be supportive of that?
Sure. Either that committee could be like an advisory committee that works and makes recommendations to the commissioner, to the city council. The other thing that we have going in our favor is that we have a, in our capital improvement program, we have funds that are directly assigned to parks, but we also have funding that's directly assigned to trails. So in my view, once we have the community services director onboard, there's going to be opportunities, not only for park development, but trail development as well, because those dollars are specifically designed and can only be used for trails.
All right, thank you. Mr. Furman, you were up first.
These, all these citywide parks are going to be open to the general public, I'm sure. Would there be any restrictions from, I can see that the Skateboard Park at Audi Murphy Ranch is going to be inundated by everybody, and three or four cities will be coming down there. Is there any problem with that?
I hate to keep saying the same thing over and over again, but that's going to be another issue that the community services director is going to have to look at. I've personally been involved in skate parks, roller hockey rinks, they're extremely time-consuming. There's a lot of different issues. There are, quite frankly, different ways to manage a skate park, and so I think that public safety, security, staffing, safety equipment, parking, proximity to the neighborhood, there are just a myriad of issues that I believe the community services director will have to deal directly with it. But there are, in answer to your question, there are different ways to operate a skate park, and that'll be another responsibility of the director to take a really close look at that and to come up with recommendations.
There's probably some good ideas on Jackson Park up in Riverside, the problems they had and how they solved them. I'd recommend talking to those people.
Yeah, I think the city of Temecula knows a few things about it, too.
Mr. Edgerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on Councilman Denver's comment about the fact that there's a different fee scheduled east to west, and even more importantly, the mayor's comments about any potential indebtedness that we would not be aware of. It is my understanding that when we go to LAFCO, one of the big factors, and they're making the decision, would be, for example, the financial viability of the city to take over the whole process. And in doing that, I suspect those issues would be a matter of discussion at LAFCO.
Right.
Any indebtedness would be discovered, or hopefully discovered, by LAFCO.
Right.
And at that point, even if they were in the affirmative, the city might be in a position, with new information, to even change their position, although I can't see that happening.
We do not believe that there's indebtedness on the east side.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any additional questions at this juncture of staff? Mr. Nelson, thank you very much for delivering that and for answering our questions, and Madam Clerk, if you could call the first speaker on this item.
Yes, sir. Dean Wetter?
Honorable mayor, council members, staff and supporters. Creating community since 1972. Hello, my name is Dean Wetter. I am the general manager for Valleywide Recreation and Park District. The purpose of my visit today is to do exactly that, create community. Since 1989, Valleywide has, Valleywide's had the honor of being a valued partner in the Menifee community. It is that partnership that allowed our district to develop, grow and become the 2013 best district in the state of California. We share this honor with you, because it means we're doing something right, and we're doing it together. Next slide, oh, thank you. It wasn't our first time, oh, go back for me a couple times, that's the one. It wasn't our first time receiving that award. In fact, we have received that award multiple times, and it's because of our volunteers, our board and our staff's commitment to our community. Our staff works and plays at Valleywide, and we take pride in that. We also take personal interest in what affects our job and community. We work as a collaborative team. We work as a collaborative team, which has enabled us to grow. As this graph illustrates, we are able to grow the number of parks while keeping our employee ratios low. How well do we work together? In 1985, we had one park, our regional facility, with 14 full-time employees. Today, we operate nearly 80 parks, 11 community centers, two aquatic facilities, nearly 100 miles of roadway landscape, a golf course, all with only 25 full-time employees. Next slide, please. As you can see by this slide, we are serious about providing local access to our facilities. 20 of these parks and three centers are here in Menifee. If you could click on the next, there we go. I guess you can say we work together very well. Our staff brings 300 years of park and recreation experience to the table, which provides a great benefit in terms of economies of scale and low overhead. Park maintenance and amenities on the west side of the 215 have been an issue mentioned. In this decision to detach from Valleywide, we don't believe taking over the East Side will solve this issue, but our district is willing and able to lend a helping hand and continue to partner with the city of Menifee in finding a solution. We're not afraid to get our hands dirty, and parks and recreation is what we do. Next slide. Is it an issue of ownership and branding? We understand that. All of our parks are clearly marked with a name in our Valleywide logo. This, too, can be solved, and we have no problem flying a Menifee flag and cross-branding with Valleywide Parks and Facilities. After all, we are partners. Next slide. Is it an issue of money? We have read staff reports and still have concerns. Valleywide is a low-overhead organization, has an extensive volunteer base, sometimes four generations deep, and is efficient by providing a singular focus. This is how we keep our cost of service and programs down to about one-half of our neighboring cities, and this is how we're able to serve over 20% of the kids in the school district. We feel we fit Menifee very well. Next slide. What does Valleywide gain by continuing to provide services to the community? The same thing we have for the past 25 years, providing exceptional service and the quality of life. This is a brief listing of the programs we offer to the community and our partnerships. In closing, it is our hope to better understand the city of Menifee's competitive advantage to providing these services. We offer our experience in evaluating all other options available. The document I've provided you with has a great deal of detail on how we can help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wetter. Mr. Edgerton?
Sir, excuse me. Hello. I wanted to, first of all, I just, I'm one of the ones who began with this city, and just, I'm not aware of any councilperson. I can speak for myself, having originated as the mayor. Every association I've had with your organization has been very positive. It's been professional. We think you've done a good job. For our city, though, it's divided, and that's not a good thing for a city. We'd like to have it under one heading, and ideally, I think most of us would like it under the city logo. But short of that, have you ever discussed in the past the idea of putting everything under Valleywide? In other words, our biggest problem is that we've got a city divided. That's not healthy for, both from a fiscal and a social standpoint, it's difficult for good planning and good administration and good implementation to have a city divided like that.
Yes, if I could respond. This does go back some time to the kind of formation of Menifee, and that division line made up with the 215 freeway was simply a line. To answer your question directly, those conversations have been offered and discussed with Valleywide. Our elected officials have taken a position that that is something, our sphere of influence, which is filed with LAFCO, does allow us to go all the way over to the Canyon Lake border, and so it does make sense.
Thank you.
In addition to that, we already do that now. In fact, our neighboring park districts do that as well in other areas, but our examples are not only the regional support that we provide over an 800-square-mile district, but also with the city of Hemet and the city of San Jacinto. We already do that almost in partnership with them. A recent example is that, is we took a community center from the city of Hemet at their request. We're coming in and operating that at about a 25% savings to that city for doing that. And that center has also had record success in numbers. It has become a hotspot for wedding receptions, as well as congressman meetings, and things that serve the community, and that's what our interest is.
Thank you, Dean. Next speaker, please.
Mary Plum.
Oh, sure. Yep. Just keep in mind, it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, I know, it's not a public hearing. You have to have a tremendous amount of equipment to maintain these parks. Do you have a ballpark figure on what your equipment's costs are? I mean, would you have $3 million worth of lawnmowers and stuff?
As the report that I provided to you illustrates is that we are very strong in controlling our costs and our overhead. We do utilize contracted services, but we do own an awful lot of our equipment as well. So it's kind of a mix. But our main concern is that we're keeping our overhead costs down, so we're providing services and maintaining our programs at affordable cost to encourage participation and healthy lifestyles, rather than going back to the debate of almost 2,000 hours of family spends inside watching TV. We're providing services and encouraging them to get out and play.
All right, thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Mary Plum.
Hi, I appreciate you taking the time out to hear me. I'm going to kind of scatter around a little bit, just because I've got notes here. I live in the Homeland area, and we really are kind of that border between what, I won't say what Menifee has sucked up from our village, but, you know, I'll leave that there. But I do have a few things that I wanted to address. One of them was the cost of creating and this department that you want to do, this Parks and Recreation. Is this something that you want to do yourself, or is this something that you're going to want to subcontract out to other small companies? I had some questions about the Audi Murphy Ranch. Was this whole thing built prior with them going to be taking care of it? Or was it always assumed that Menifee was going to take that over? Is Menifee going to sponsor this Community Services Director and Service Department with increased taxes? And, you know, if I'm going to become sucked up by Menifee, are my taxes now going to be double all of a sudden because I have to pay for a Parks Department? I have some real concerns about fees. You know, the one thing I can say about Valleywide is, Valleywide has always been very good about maintaining the fees and being affordable for not just the middle incomes, but we are a very low-income area, Romoland, Homeland, Winchester, Green Acres, where we can't pay the kind of fees. I can honestly say, the fees that are being charged by Menifee are almost double what we have to pay out of Valleywide. How about availability and accessibility? Are we suddenly going to lose our community center, which, by the way, we paid for? We spent years trying to get the money to get this Marion &amp; Ashley Center put in there, and now all of a sudden, you guys are going to suck it up? I've only got so much time. Are we going to be included as part of this? I'm not saying that Menifee tends to kind of, but I don't want to be the poor cousin that lives right down the street, literally across the road from Briggs, and say, now it's not my center anymore. What happens to the child center that's part of it? I only have a couple more minutes, so what about the events and the programming? Who's going to take care of this? And are you going to absorb this huge cost of taking over this type of job? So please think about it. Think about, you know, the other people that actually use these centers, especially when you talk about Quail Valley, etc. Thank you for the three minutes, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Marty Mance.
All right. I just want to start off by saying, this is my first time attending the meeting. I was very inspired to see you guys open with words of inspiration and prayer. I do appreciate that, and hope that never ends, actually, because, oh my God, he's a God of love. And so, I just want to introduce myself. I work for a company that does business in Menifee. It's child development centers. We actually operate seven programs here in Menifee. Six of them are at the elementary schools, before-and-after-school programs/summer camp programs. And we serve, you know, we have state funding available for children as well. Specifically, how this relates to this topic is, one of the programs is at the Marion &amp; Ashley Center. We've been partnering with Valleywide since 2011, when we opened our doors and were part of the building aspect of it, and First Five of Riverside, you know, helped support with that as well. And it's been a great partnership all along. You guys have already commented about what the wonderful program that they're doing, but they do a ton in the community. And, you know, we even partnered in the first Pinewood Derby. I don't know if you were there, but that was a hoot, actually. And last year, we had kids from our program also participated and actually had a car. We competed in there. Well, didn't compete very well, but we competed, you know, in the Pinewood Derby. And I just want to say that they run an excellent, an excellent program. Their customer service that they give to the families is phenomenal. And that's actually, as I get older, I'm a customer service guy, and poor customer service really bothers me as I get older, and I have less and less tolerance for it. And I have to say, the customer service that they give to the innumerable amount of families that come into that facility, whether it's individuals or whether it's groups, teams, and whoever, they really serve the community really well. And it doesn't matter who comes in, no matter what age, grandparent to a small child, they give them the respect that they deserve. And it just felt that that was important, to share that as you move forward and make the decisions that you feel are best for the city. So I want to say, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
James Canales.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, this is my first time here, and honestly, I can't see how you people sit here with a straight face on some of these comments. But that said aside, I'm here to speak, you guys have, I'll spread the numbers, Mr. Nelson, other members from Valleywide have spread the numbers for their case for keeping it. I'm here to talk about the kids. I moved to Menifee in 2005, and the last, I'd say, the last eight and a half years or so, I've coached 34 seasons of kids' sports in the city of Menifee, whether it's through Valleywide, through their basketball, indoor soccer, indoor kickball. What else we got? We got flag football. We got through Little League, through Menifee ASA. When you multiply that out by the kids, that's over 400 kids in the last eight and a half years that I've taken the time to coach. Some of them, two teams going on at the same time. And I did it because Valleywide was the very first one that I went to coaching indoor soccer. They showed me that a small community of Menifee, Mr. Nelson, you mentioned the word "community" very, very many times in your presentation, and I'm sorry, but I'm from the group that says, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Valleywide has brought a sense of community to not only ours, but Hemet, San Jacinto, and all the other surrounding areas. The staff that they brought on teach kids how to, teach kids how to be coaches, teach kids how to be mentors to other kids. I have kids that I coached at the very beginning that are now teaching and coaching other kids through the Valleywide program. It's a lot more than just parks. You saw these people stand up. It's their jobs, it's their livelihoods. But the people that can't be here tonight, the kids, Valleywide keeps their costs down to allow underprivileged kids to be able to play these sports. When you bring in, when the city takes over, you were talking about generating new revenue to tackle this project. Well, the only way you generate new net revenue is to either raise taxes or raise the fees. You start raising fees on these kids, they're going to go to the surrounding cities, because I've seen that. There's numerous travel clubs that opened up for every single sport, and if they're going to end up having to pay 15, 20 bucks a season more, they'll go take it to another city and give their money there and play on a travel team. It's, and that's, that's just from years of coaching and seeing this happen and taking place. So I would just ask you to think about, not only the parks, but think about the kids that this is going to affect if the city separates from Valleywide. And I love the idea of Valleywide expanding throughout the city of Menifee to bring that all under one, because that would take, that would take the kids that we currently coach that drive across that 215 freeway and give them a spot to do something over there on the other side of Menifee, on the west side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canales. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. And, Mr. Canales, just wanted to share some information with you. The revenues we were talking about were on the west side, not on the east side. So the programs that we have on the west side do not even come close to the programs that are on the east side. That would be our opportunity to invest in what the east side's doing on the west side, and therefore, offer those programs to create revenue, not increase people's prices.
Next speaker, please.
Martin Rosen.
Oh, by the way, while you're making your way to the podium, I was remiss in introducing Mr. Rosen prior. Mr. Rosen is a newly-appointed Riverside County Parks Commissioner for the whole county of Riverside. Congratulations, Commissioner Rosen.
Mayor, man, city council, staff, and residents, good evening. Right off the bat, let me say, I think it's a wonderful idea to create a Parks Department. But I do have one issue, and that really was brought up by John, and I would like to just expand a little bit on it. The people east of the 215 pay a lot more money to Valleywide than the people on the west side pay to the county through CSA. In fact, according to the staff report that Sean Nelson just put out, that amount is over $2.9 million more, specifically $845,535 on the west side, $3,750,897 on the east side. This is one city. We can't have two classes of citizens. The payments for parks, recreation, landscaping will eventually have to be equalized. Everyone should pay the same amount for the same services. Right now, Valleywide provides more services on the east side, and of course, charges more. Therefore, at some time, the citizens of our city will have to vote, I believe, on their payment for parks and recreation. I would ask, actually, our city attorney if a vote would have to come about. If that's the case, doing this prior to asking the people whether or not they want it is really, you know, putting the horse before the cart. Do the people want to pay the extra money? Think about it. The people on the east side will be happy because their rates will go down. People on the west side will not be happy because their rates would go up if you equalize it. So, of course, the committee would be more than happy to help in any way that it can. And I was chair of that committee, and of course, I agree, I'm sure every one of us would be happy to help. But I think you need to look at that, whether or not it is going to be an issue with extra funding required, and people having to pay more on some, on one side than the other.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Mr. Edgerton?
Again, Mr. Rosen, thank you for your recent opportunity to serve, as you've continued to do ever since I've known you. What I'm curious about, and I agree with you, that that is a question to be asked, should we have a vote if indeed there's going to be an increased fee? From what I heard from staff, that isn't going to be the case, but I don't, I don't have that answer. So, in other words, if there is going to be an increased fee, then I think you made a point that we should be discussing. However, if it's going to be neutral, as they said, I think we need some input from staff. it's going to be neutral, as they said, I, I think we need some input from staff in reference to that.
May I just say, if you don't do anything, then literally, the east side people are paying four times more than the west side people.
But you, Mr. Johnson, you previously stated that, in your opinion, this is a, this is a revenue-neutral proposal.
Well, we believe that there's certain statutes in place that affect the assessments that are on the properties currently. And there are accelerators, and there is a ceiling to how much you can actually assess a property. So to that extent, if we wanted to equalize both sides, and we're providing both sides, that would be an issue we would have to come across. I can't tell you if we're going to be able to do that now, or moving into the, moving into that arena. It's a policy decision now on how to move forward, and we've got to put all the pieces together to move forward based on the policy decision.
Is your, if I understand your answer, you're saying that to have a vote now would be to ask the people to make a decision about something we don't have an answer to yet? Is that correct?
We do not have a policy decision by this council to move forward, therefore, it's difficult to ask.
No, 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 no. It wasn't a policy, a policy decision. He was discussing the fees.
Now I understand your question. We would have to go before LAFCO and see.
To determine that.
Correct.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
I was just going to point that out, that there is an entire structure for doing this, and it includes LAFCO. And that's where you basically find out what the costs are, and whether there is a need for a vote. Sometimes there is a protest vote arrangement through LAFCO in the formation or the annexation of these things. So it depends on how that evolves, what you will have to do.
That's a good point, because there's the, you know, whatever the direction of the council is to staff tonight on this matter, it's got to go before LAFCO. It's, they've got to do a lot of research. There's going to be a hearing, a couple different hearings on the matter. And so whatever the policy direction is tonight, those things are going to be clearly vetted out.
Yes. And actually, the decision, whatever the decision is tonight, is the beginning only of the process. The decision is not made by this body.
Correct.
It's made by LAFCO.
Thank you for that clarification. Was there any other question of, on, okay. Next speaker, please.
Debbie Mannion.
My name's Debbie Mannion. I have lived here since 91. I, my parents and sisters have lived here since 89. So we were part of the very beginning of Menifee and the Menifee Lakes. I am also president of Lake Menifee Women's Club, who I have about six, seven members here that would speak, except we don't need to spend that much time. We all have the same opinion. We think that Valleywide has done an awesome job. They have partnered with everything that we have asked. They are partners with, if we didn't have the Fourth of July celebration, if they hadn't partnered with us as well. We started out with all the kids' activities in the beginning, with your Santa's visits, your Halloween, your Easter, all those different things that the community needed. Valleywide always stepped in. They do an awesome job. They keep a facility that is impeccable. We have tournaments from all over the country come here because Valleywide does such an awesome job. And the fees are reasonable. And the kids in the area can stay and play because of the fees. I also helped start the girls' softball program in the area. We would have had no softball program for years had it not been for Valleywide to help us keep our fees down and get the kids to be able to play. The girls, we happened to be the girls' softball program. There was Little League program already going, but and AYSO. All of those programs started and continued because Valleywide helped us. And I think that they have an, have continued to keep everything consistent through the city and offered it to anybody. You don't have to live on the east or west side of the city to play at the park. And they have, they have made no distinctions whatsoever as to what side of the city, the city you live on. The people, when we first moved here, and Valleywide was part of our program, then with this, with this builder, they helped us do, they helped us put it all together. And I think Valleywide should be recommended and left what they do. And if extended to handle everything, then it should be given to Valleywide.
Thank you. Mr. Denver?
Counsel, I want you to recognize who this lady is. She's involved in everything that I, you know, Santa Claus, she does the Quail Valley Santa Claus event. She's involved in more things than, than you ever know. I don't know how she stays married and, and does all the things she does. So listen to her.
Thank you, Ms. Mannion. Do we have any other speakers on this topic?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed. How many are?
Two.
All right. Thank you.
Jackie Arroyo.
Ms. Arroyo, Jackie Arroyo. She left? All right.
Deborah Damon.
Right up here.
I really wasn't planning on speaking. I just wanted to turn in my opinion on paper. But I, I'm with the Jazzercise program at Valleywide. We've been there for over 15 years, since before the building was even opened. And I'm just here to support them and their team. I would love to see them take over the whole of the city parks area. If we want to do a commission, if you want to do something different with the trails and the cultural aspect, that's great. But Valleywide runs a good park. They've been doing it for a long time. The city has not. And I think that trying to take on more right now, as we're such a young city, just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. The cost, you cannot say that it's not going to affect our taxes. It's impossible. Either my taxes are going to go down, and the west sides are going to go up, or I'm going to be really mad. Right? Because if the city takes over the taxes, something's going to have to change. We're right now funding the whole program. I have no problem with that. But if the city takes it over, then I will have an issue, because I'm not getting the same services that I am from Valleywide right now. So I really hope that you will give us some additional consideration. They've just done a fabulous job, and they're more than willing to partner with Menifee. And I think that that might be a better way for us all to go. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. City Clerk?
I've had a request for two other speakers. Do you wish to take them at this time?
So we got them snuck in under the radar. Yes. Please proceed with public comment.
Vince. And in all the years I've known you, sir, I do not know your last.
Vince Valdez.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Hello, most of you, councilmembers. Just wanted to clear up one point, just so that before we get, before you go into your deliberations and things. You keep mentioning the city divided, and the programs that are going to be started that are not offered on the west side of the freeway. We offer programs to the whole city. I mean, we fly schools for all our programs. One of them's in Lake Elsinore, which, you know, the school over by your place over there is actually within the city limits, I believe, just about there. We've got one over here that's, I think, is in Murrieta, pretty close there. So we hit every school. We hit every side of the freeway. Every kid that's in the city, within the city limits, and even out, gets information on every program we run, as well as adults. So it, it's, it's not a, as far as we're concerned, not a divided city. We're not servicing just one side. There aren't programs that we're offering on the west side that are not being offered on the east side. So I just wanted to clear that up before we went anywhere.
Mr. Edgerton?
Yeah, just an extension to what you're saying. So you're offering, and have been offering to boys and girls in the city of Menifee, through all of our schools, any number of programs that they can become involved in after they finish school on a daily basis?
Yes. And as well as the, the Little League program, the girls' program, and the pony program, all are the same way. They all encompass the entire city. They use our facilities for their games. Little League does play games over here on this side also, behind the church, over here. They've got a couple of fields. But they, they utilize every, every piece of recreation park or playground they can find. And so it's.
So are you saying, without you, we're, we're stuck with how we're going to deal with all those boys and girls?
Well, we deal with them right now. I think we deal with them very well. It is.
Yes, you do.
It works out really good. I enjoy it. It works out real well. But we do service the whole city.
Thank you, sir.
As we do right now.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Yvette Taylor.
Can everyone hear me? I'm kind of short, so. I think it's wonderful that we have an ability to, to exercise our democratic right to speak. I just think it's amazing. So thank you, and good evening to everybody. I have nothing new, really, to say, just to reiterate the words that have already been shared. It just seems like a somewhat costly, at least it sounds, a costly venture to fix something that isn't broken. We're talking about people losing jobs, in order to replace them with public employees, which I believe are part of a public employee retirement system. So dollar for dollar, it's a more expensive person to replace, considering we already have somebody working to offer those services. The services are offered regardless of what side of the freeway we live on, across the board. All people have the ability to participate where there are programs that they want to take part in. It sounds like if this is an issue of unification, it really does come down to branding, I would assume. And that seems to have been addressed. We have somebody through Valleywide that has done an excellent job maintaining programs and facilities, and they seem like a very willing and able partner, in helping to make sure that the citizens of the city know that they're invited to go anywhere, do anything. And then lastly, it seems like in the time that the city has had parks that they have run under their own name, the burden of proof has kind of been on them to make sure that they have offered things that are so good, so compelling, that we would want to replace something that's already good. And I don't know that they've done that. They have a lot of parks that they run currently. How is that any more attractive? Why would we replace Valleywide in comparison to what the city has done through their own parks? I don't know that that really has been a very compelling argument that's been made. So why change it?
Thank you. That is, that is the issue, however, at hand. And Valleywide Recreation and Park District is also a public agency, so everybody that's employed there is a public agency employee. Do we have additional speakers at this time?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. We're inside the rail, then, as they say. And, Counsel, what's your pleasure on this agenda item? Mr. Denver?
I'd like to see this continued, analyzed, a little bit more brought to us. But I'd like to see another proposal and compare the two of having Valleywide do both sides, and how that would affect costs, how that would change. For instance, I learned more right now, right here, right now, about when Valleywide puts, puts an activity in, the kids on the other side of the freeway can come over. I'm a little confused, because when I see the Valleywide paper of what they do, and then you see the EDA, what they do, they're not the same. They're, they, they compete, they duplicate sometimes. It needs to be all under, the first thing, it needs to all be under one system. But there's a compelling interest here. The Valleywide does do what, know what they're doing. So I think we ought to be brought two proposals, financially, people-wise, and all the rest of it.
Well, that's up to LAFCO, if that's what our decision is. Mr. August?
I just want to say, if I was sitting here voting a talent contest, I'd have to congratulate whoever's in charge of Valleywide. I think he was the first speaker. What an excellent group of people and represent, have a lot of pride in what you're doing. Like, I too, like Mr. Denver, I've learned a lot that I didn't know before tonight. But I want to ask some questions to staff, and that would be, it says here, recommended action to authorize staff to implement a citywide approach. If we do that tonight, that means we have to wait for LAFCO to get us the.
Speaking of Mike, Mr. August.
Yeah, sure. So how long would it take to get to LAFCO? And during that time, are we allowed to find out more about Valleywide as compared to taking our own community services? So in other words, if we approve the city to implement a citywide approach tonight, do we still have time to, if we get more information, to change our mind down the road? All right. Then I would recommend that, I'm going to recommend that we take the staff's approach and proceed with implementing the citywide approach, taking a vote on that.
Point of order. Mr. Edgerton?
Point of order. You ask a question of the city attorney. Can we change our mind down the road once we've started this process? You seemed to answer in the affirmative. Was that correct?
I did.
Thank you.
Mr. Denver?
I'd just like clarification. On the citywide approach, what's, the way it was presented to us, we're going to LAFCO. And that's the plan on such and such a date. It seems to me that we need to have a meeting to discuss whether, because if you, if you let Valleywide take over at all, I don't think you have to go to LAFCO. I think we can do that. Am I incorrect?
No, if it's a reorganization, it would go to LAFCO in either of those circumstances. Because Valleywide would be taking over our space, our, our parks and so on. And that would be a change of organization, just as it would be the other way. Either of those would go.
I understand. But we still could have a time when we could look at the two approaches and have two proposals, so that we could look at them both before we get to LAFCO.
You, you can still do that. As a matter of fact, you could direct that that come back and still move forward. I mean, it's up to you on this.
Mr. Edgerton?
Thank you, Mayor. If, if we proceed with the staff's recommendation and go to LAFCO, help us all understand. LAFCO then has the ability, I'll make a statement, and then you correct me if I'm wrong. LAFCO has the ability to say, looking at a number of issues, equality, financial ability, et cetera, we do not believe that it's in the best interest of the community for the city to take it over. Or secondly, that we do believe it's in the best interest of the city to take over the whole area. Could they can also conceivably say it would be their recommendation that it would be better that Valleywide take over the entire area? Is it?
They could. The fact of the matter is that, that you will be presenting them with a proposal, whatever that proposal ultimately becomes. They will evaluate it in terms of the benefits and, and problems with it. And then they will potentially condition it. And that's where you may have an election for, if there's a need for any kind of increase in, in rates or anything like that. That might come in there. But it's a whole process. There are many steps along the way. And at any time, you can stop the process. So it's, you know, it's an open-ended kind of thing.
So that, assuming it proceeded to LAFCO, representatives from LAFCO and representatives, citizens from the community could represent LAFCO's point of view at the proceedings, then? Is that correct?
Well, no, the LAFCO members themselves would, would be.
Well, but they're, they're going to be taking testimony?
They're going to be taking testimony, but it's not from LAFCO citizens.
No, I mean, LAFCO will be taking testimony from the city, obviously.
From the city, and from the district, and from the public generally.
Correct. That was my question. And then when they finally reach their decision, is it a mandate, or is it permissive?
Well, it's definitely, well, it's permissive in that they will come up with conditions of approval and all of that. And you need to then determine whether that's acceptable to the city. If it's acceptable, then it, it will move forward at that point with whatever further action is needed.
So in other words, if, if they said, we recommend that LAFCO, or that citywide, Valleywide take over the entire city, and/or they might say, yes, we think the city should take the whole area over, and then the council would still have the ability to say, you know, after we've evaluated everything, and even after LAFCO's looked at everything, we're going to stay the way we are, or we're going to go with LAFCO's permission?
What LAFCO will consider is whatever the proposal is they have before them. And that will be one proposal from the city, either city or Valleywide maybe takes over. It could be that Valleywide would also submit a proposal to the reverse. If that's the case, then they would look at both of them separately and make a recommendation. But again, Valleywide would have to agree to whatever conditions are imposed. And then LAFCO could make a decision to approve or deny one or the other. But it is, as I said, it's a step-by-step kind of process.
But again, assuming LAFCO approves what the city is requesting, the final decision would rest with the council, even after LAFCO approved?
Well, by the time LAFCO approves it, you will have seen the conditions of approval, and you will either agree to them or not. and you will either agree to them or not.
So legally, the last decision will be the city's?
No, the last decision will, well, the last decision will be LAFCO's to determine that it should form or not form. But before you get to that decision, you will be able to see whether or not the proposal, the final way it comes out, is acceptable to the city.
Okay. So, once we start down this path and LAFCO decides we can take over the entire city, that's it. That's done. We can no longer back out of that.
Once LAFCO decides and you have agreed to the conditions of approval, once they make a decision, then the various implementing steps will need to be taken.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson and then Mr. August.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Nelson has been raising his hand for a while. I just wanted to acknowledge him and give my time to him.
Thank you. The city council will have to make a decision as to what type of application they want to submit to LAFCO. Is it going to be a detachment from Valleywide? Or if the council wants to look at two proposals, the other proposal would be to expand the sphere of influence to the west side. So, if the council desires to look at this issue and get more information, we can still move forward with a citywide approach to providing parks and recreation services, and there is time for the council to look at this issue closer, to look at the fiscal issues associated with it. But prior to going to the city, to LAFCO, the city council will need to make a decision in the application. Is it going to be a detachment from Valleywide, or is it going to be an expansion of the sphere of influence?
And just to be clear, Valleywide's already stated they have a sphere of influence to the west, all the way to Canyon Lake.
But even with the sphere of influence, LAFCO will still have to do an annexation then. Okay, so it's going to be one or the other. The other issue that I think is really important, we have no plans to change any of the assessments and any of the fees. And to speak directly to Mr. Rosen's comment, the way we're going to be able to do that is any new park development on the west side of the city, we will have maintenance CFDs in place to be able to pay for the additional cost associated with those new parks. So, we're very confident that we're going to be able to provide the same level of services on the east side with the existing fee structure and a much expanded service on the west side without any fiscal impact to our citizens. And further, there are guidelines, as Mr. Johnson has stated previously, you cannot increase any assessments without a public vote and a two-thirds majority approval. So, there are already all of the safeguards in place to protect the citizens from any increase in taxes. And I can tell by the conversation that when people leave these chambers, there's going to be all this talk about increasing assessments and increasing fees, and I want to make it very clear, that cannot happen without a public vote and without a two-thirds majority approval.
Mr. August?
I just want to kind of agree, I think I'm agreeing with Mr. Nelson here, that by approving the citywide approach tonight on the part of the council, we're really not committing to anything in the affirmative, that we still have time to evaluate both sides. And to me, that would be, to me, if we took that approach to it, we'd probably be doing the citizens of Menifee, probably, at least to consider both options.
Correct.
Working for them.
Mr. Furman?
I'm just going to make an analogy of what I see here being discussed tonight. I think you've all seen the movie, or the program on TV, The Deadliest Catch. What we have is we have a fishing boat full of experts, and they know how to catch, they know how to catch Alaskan king crab. All right? They're experts. They know what they're doing. Now, we're proposing, we buy a boat, buy the traps and learn to fish. All right? How long, how long is it going to take for us to get up to the expertise that Valleywide has? That's the thing I have to decide.
Mr. Edgerton?
I wanted to ask a question, Sean. You said nineteen CFDs are in place. Are you talking about existing?
I'm saying with any new development project that comes in on the west side, the plan is like, for example, Audi Murphy Ranch Sports Park and those other parks that are within that development, there will be an existing maintenance CFD in place to pay for the ongoing operation and maintenance costs of those parks. So, as we add new parks on the west side, those new developments will have CFDs in place to pay for the ongoing maintenance. So, that will address those additional new facilities, which then would not require us to have to make any changes whatsoever to the existing assessments on the west side, which primarily is only one CSA, CSA 145. And as I stated previously, the city council couldn't increase those fees even if you wanted to without a public vote and a two-thirds majority approval.
Well, but those new entities will have, it'll be assumed that they're going to be trying to generate funds.
The new parks that are within new developments, that'll be part of the disclosure of the CFD that's within that development. So, when those homes come in, they'll know exactly what their property taxes are, and they'll also know what their CFD assessment is, and those assessments will go to pay for the maintenance of those new park facilities.
These new homes are existing homes?
New homes.
New homes might be, okay, I see where you're coming from. Thanks, Sean.
Mr. Johnson?
Just the final caveat to that, the development projects that are being built and the parks that are being developed on the west side are conveyed to the city as city ownership as soon as the parks completed. So, ongoing maintenance and operations is funded, and the city then takes ownership of the parks.
Correct. Thank you very much. All the public commenters, thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts. Whatever is decided here tonight, there's many, many lengthy additional processes that have to go down before anything would change. And I just want to compliment again, Valleywide Recreation Park District, you are a marvelous organization, have been for many years in delivering services, and this is just a question that the city has to address here at some point. So, with that, Mr. August?
I'm ready to make a motion anytime, Mr. Mayor.
Please do so.
And I'm going to make the motion that the city council authorize the staff to implement the citywide approach in delivering community services, parks and recreation programming for the city of Menifee. I'm looking for a second.
Is there a second on that motion?
Would the motion, are you suggesting then we approach LAFCO and let LAFCO look at evaluating the city taking over the entire city as well as perhaps citywide taking over the entire city?
I'm saying what we're going to do by approving my motion is we're going to take a look at both options, and we're not committed to anything. It's more information to evaluate, that's all.
Okay, so we're going to look at both possibilities of the city taking over the entire city and of citywide, okay, Valleywide. I'm getting tired.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Then I'll second the motion if that is the case.
And, you know, one thing, before I call the roll, it needs to be, LAFCO has already made a sphere of influence decision for that organization, and that's going to come into, that's going to be a very significant point as this process goes forward. So, I'm talking about Valleywide's sphere of influence all the way to the Canyon Lake border. Yeah, of course.
So, what does that mean to me? Does that mean that the chances are likely that we will end up with Valleywide?
It's possible.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Whatever's best.
Yeah. All right. Call the roll, Madam Clerk. The motion is as presented by staff. The motion is as presented to staff, presented by staff.
I just want to say that I think the motion originally made wasn't what it ended up being. So, if you can just doctor what he originally said to include Valleywide in there somehow.
Restate the motion, please.
Yeah, try and fix it.
It doesn't need to be, just read the agenda item.
My understanding is the motion is the recommendation that was on the agenda item to allow staff to proceed.
Was that your motion, Mr. August?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Mr. Edgerton?
Point of order.
Yeah, Mr. Edgerton.
I asked the Councilman August, who made the motion, if his motion would include, when we made a presentation to LAFCO, that our objective was to not have a city divided, that we're looking for LAFCO's recommendation, should the city take over the entire city, or should Valleywide take over the entire city? In other words, we're not going in with a single commitment. We're leaving it open for either the city or Valleywide.
I believe that's what, yeah. That's my understanding.
Is that my understanding of the motion? Ms. Bennett?
I believe I heard that Mr. August would like to move that staff is authorized to implement a citywide approach to delivering community services, parks and recreation programming for the city.
Which would allow an evaluation by LAFCO of either the city or Valleywide being the best prospect for taking over the entire city?
In the process.
Correct. That was the motion? That tag on, was it not?
Do it.
That was great.
The way, excuse me, the way the staff recommendation is worded encompasses that. It just says --
Yes, it does.
It says, wait, wait, please. It does. It says citywide. It doesn't say city-run. It says that whoever is going to take over will be one entity. So, that's why I believe Mr. August is recommending this.
That's clear. Yep. And ladies and gentlemen, we're inside the rail. This is a council discussion. The public has been heard on this item. Please bear with us while we work through the motion and the vote. Before, Mr. Johnson, you had your light on first.
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I think there's a little confusion as to the process with LAFCO. I don't believe that we can bring two items before LAFCO and have them make a decision. A policy decision from council needs to be made, and we bring that decision to LAFCO. They do the research on it, and then they make a determination. And then if the determination is the city is going to have citywide programming and a detachment from Valleywide is going to happen, then there's actually an opportunity for Valleywide or for residents in the city who don't agree with that to state an opinion against that decision, and it can be rebuffed. I do not believe that LAFCO as an organization will take two opportunities from us and tell us which one's better. What they want is a recommendation from the city and a determination by them to move forward.
Point of order, that's not the information we got from the city attorney just a couple of minutes ago.
Okay, hold on.
So, we need clarification.
Yep. Before we get that clarification, we have other speakers in the queue from here from the council, but please proceed.
Oh, okay. That is the same information. What you will be doing between now and the time that you submit to LAFCO is determining what you want LAFCO to act on. Now, the staff recommendation is that whatever that issue is, however you approach it, it should be citywide. And that's what I believe Mr. August basically moved, was that you direct staff to look at a citywide approach, whether it be the city or Valleywide. But ultimately, you're going to make one recommendation, you're going to ask one request of LAFCO, and LAFCO will then pursue that, look at it, look at the finances, condition it, do any number of things, and then come back with that. There'll be a hearing, and they will have conditions, and you will ultimately be confronted with what they think will work or won't work on what you present. But you get to decide what to present, and it's only one matter.
Mr. Johnson and then Mr. Denver.
Sorry, I don't believe we need a LAFCO decision to allow Valleywide to take over and operate on the west side of 215. They already have that sphere of influence. It would be the city contracting with them to run the parks and recreation programs on the west side of the freeway and continue as they are on the east side. That's where we're getting a little confused with the LAFCO decision.
Well, your information is different from the city attorney's. That was point of order.
Mr. Edgerton, hold on, please. There are other speakers ahead of you.
Well, it's a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Then please go.
Your information is different than the city attorney's. Mr. Johnson, we need a clarification.
My understanding that Valleywide has currently a sphere of influence on the west side of the 215, going all the way to Canyon Lake. If we wanted a citywide approach to Valleywide, the city would currently, would simply contract with Valleywide to run the parks and recreation programs on the west side. We currently do that with the Community Services Department of the Economic Development Agency of the county. It would simply be moving away from the county and moving into a Valleywide situation. So, the decision for a citywide, city-run parks and recreation department would be to go to LAFCO. I hope I've cleared up any confusion.
Mr. Denver?
I agree with Deputy Mayor Edgerton. We've heard this story 14 different sides, and I'm just going to see if I understand it, even though this has been said no and yes and no and yes. I think what we ought to do is to go to LAFCO or not with one approach, and that approach would be decided when we go to LAFCO. I think between then and now, what we ought to do is to look at two possibilities. One is the city of Menifee runs its own park department, and I think the second thing we look at and we decide before we go or don't go to LAFCO is that Valleywide is contracted with to take over the west side of the freeway, and we don't go to LAFCO. But you just said a while ago you had to go to LAFCO anyway, but anyway. So, let's go look at both of those, then let's the council decide, then we either go to LAFCO with one, or we contract with the other if we go the other way. It's a simple, yeah, workshop, and we look at two equal approaches. My worry is, is that if we approve this motion the way it was said at the beginning, the way this is written in the book, it only goes one way. That's the city runs the parks. That's the way, that's what staff wants to do at this minute. And so, let's look at the other approach, Valleywide too. Let's let the council decide, then give staff direction before we go to LAFCO within a few months, and then either go to LAFCO or not.
Mr. Nelson?
Thank you. Julie, if you could put up the very last slide, which hopefully this will clear this up. This is our recommendation. Step one, to sue Audi Murphy Ranch Park in April of this year. Step two, assume the temporary sports fields July 1. Step three, assume the west side parks and the senior center July 1. Step four was to assume the east side parks by going through a detachment process through LAFCO. I would suggest that we modify that to allow the council to look at either a detachment from Valleywide through LAFCO or an extension of Valleywide throughout the balance of the city. And in that way, you're maintaining a citywide approach to providing these services, and then the fifth recommendation is to form a commission. And while I'm still here, my strong recommendation to the city council first and foremost is do not end up with a divided city where you have the city providing services on one side and a special district on the other. Further, I'm a strong advocate of local control, and I personally believe that the city should drive parks and recreation within the community, and I also do believe that there's a way to integrate Valleywide within that system. But again, that's a policy decision that the city council can make over the next few months. Does that help to clarify things?
Mr. August?
No.
Okay.
What, okay, no, it doesn't help clear it up for me. I want to go back to my original point. Citywide, city-run. What is the staff recommending? The city run both sides of the freeway, is that correct?
Correct.
So, all right, so let's say we submit, we approve the motion I made tonight, it goes to LAFCO, okay?
The whatever goes to LAFCO has to be a recommendation from the city council. The city council has to be recommending something.
Okay.
Either a detachment from Valleywide or an expansion, well, if -- Well, there's already a sphere of influence. There's already a sphere of influence on the west side. I'm not sure whether that requires a LAFCO action or not. Maybe it doesn't require a LAFCO action. But the bottom line is, there's two alternatives. One would be to expand Valleywide to the west. The other option is to detach Valleywide and have a citywide...
Okay.
...recreation department.
Let's take the hypothetical here. Let's say we approve the motion that I made, and we go city run, okay? It goes to LAFCO.
All right.
LAFCO is going to make a determination, give us all the information on it. If that doesn't mean we can't go citywide, if we find out that citywide is going to be... Valleywide is going to be better for us in the future, does it? So we're not committing to anything if we approve the motion that I made tonight. We're not committing anything.
Your, if with this current staff recommendation, the current staff recommendation would be to submit an application to detach from Valleywide. If you take the approach that was stated by some of the other council members, you essentially would defer the type of application that you would submit to LAFCO to allow the council to have more discussion on that point and then make a decision as to whether or not you want to detach from Valleywide or whether or not you want to expand into a Valleywide sphere.
And now that's your recommendation?
Correct.
Okay. And as long as Mr. Denver makes that motion, I'll probably second it.
I want to hear it.
Mr. Furman.
Sean, would with this citywide control, would we have to hire 28 people, and they would take over all the services and all the maintenance of all the parks? Is that what we're saying?
That would be an ongoing discussion between the city and Valleywide, and probably through the LAFCO process. And I do believe that there would be opportunities to provide employment opportunities, assuming that we, the council went with a detachment process. There's no question in my mind that there would be employment opportunities for the existing employees of Valleywide. But ultimately, that would still be a decision of the city. The city would still have the ability to make that.
This is going to be kind of a silly question, I guess. Could we maintain control of the community service program and subcontract to Valleywide?
The only, what I would suggest is if the council wanted Valleywide to run the programs citywide, the council then would not make a recommendation to submit an application to LAFCO to detach from Valleywide. The council would essentially take the position that we have an existing sphere of influence, and either we have to go to LAFCO or we don't have to go to LAFCO. And we would just extend a contract on the west side to Valleywide. Does that make sense?
I'm lost.
Mr. Denver.
There is a way to split the baby, and that is, we have a choice. We can do what you want to do, which is to, the city takes over the parks and rec. We could do another thing. Some of the people in the audience wants to have Valleywide be extended to all the way through Menifee. There's a second, third way of doing this. And that is that we set up a Menifee Parks and Recreation Service. We take over all of Menifee, and then we contract with Valleywide. And so here's where I'm going. I think we ought to have a little more conversation on this, and I think we ought to have one more meeting, maybe a workshop, and work it out. We've got plenty of time. I still think we go with Audie Murphy. We go with... The only thing I'm concerned about is July 1, 2015, the LAFCO. Let's just take a little bit of time. We've got a year, more than that, and let's work on this.
Mr. Edgerton.
Well, I'm going to follow up with Councilman Denver's remarks, which I think were well said.
That's a first time.
That's a first. I'm sure the council's unanimous in we do not want to continue with a divided city. Secondly, probably most of us have your bias, Sean, in that we want local control, and it'd be preferable for us to have the city take over the entire city. However, there's been a lot of information tonight that I've heard from citizens and from the Valleywide people that's new, I believe, to the entire council. I'm troubled by the split, the 180 degrees, between the city attorney and the city manager. I'm sure that'll come back together very quickly. But there were two different positions there. The city manager seems to have the same view as you. So I think my own preference would be, before we jump into something, I can think of another issue where we may have jumped in prematurely and then regretted that we didn't have more information before we proceeded. I would prefer, with what I think you are recommending, perhaps have a workshop where we can really flesh this out, let Valleywide have another opportunity to give their presentation and the cities and the community. And let's be sure we know what we're doing before we proceed with an affirmative motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Does somebody want, would somebody like to make an alternative motion?
I'll make a motion, I think.
Is this a substitute motion?
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion. Is that we continue with the implementing the citywide community services program with the modification that before July 1 of 2015, we have a workshop with both the city proposal and a Valleywide proposal, and look at them both. And then we move forward to the going to LAFCO or not.
Is there a second?
Well, my concern with that motion, Mr. Denver, is your timing.
We can do it next week. I don't care. I'm just trying to get...
I don't want to go all the way to 215. Let's make our decision and not kick the can.
Six months, two to three months. Works for me.
Three months is better, but I've already given a second. Can I give another one? How many seconds do I have?
This would be the second on the substitute motion. This would be a second on the substitute motion.
I'll second the substitute motion.
Okay, so...
You're having a workshop.
Right. So the motion is to approve the staff report as presented with a community services program, citywide view, as modified with a future workshop to have another discussion about how we're going to approach that, whether that be city run or Valleywide run.
That is the motion I have recorded.
All right. Let's call the roll on that motion.
You're on the substitute.
Counsel, on the substitute motion. Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay.
I'm going to...
We're going to recess until 10:10.
Do you have to dismiss the other motion?
Okay, we are re-adjourned, and we are on to Agenda Item 12.4, Fiscal Year 2013/14 Midyear Budget Review and Adjustments. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At the beginning of the budget development for this current fiscal year, which began on July 1, and will carry us through June 30, I made significant cuts to the city's expenses to make sure that we could create a balanced operating budget for this year. And I also requested, as you recall, funds from fund balance for capital improvement expenses that we were not able to request in this year's operating budget. During the development of the budget, the council considered and approved the cost of services study, which became effective in late September. But revenue was not included in that approved budget. Staff believed that we would have the ability to trip the cost of the operating in the city and appropriate revenue stream from the cost of services study, and that the economy, which it has, would assist us with new development projects that were on the horizon for this fiscal year. It was anticipated that staff would be coming back at midyear to update the budget with great news and the opportunity to continue to move the city forward in a positive and prudent financial manner. If you recall, at last year's midyear, we were concerned that the lack of attention from the city to the lost $4 million in annual revenue from the governor's taking of the city's vehicle license fee would hamper our growth. So we cut our spending. We balanced our budget. And without that funding, and approved a two-year-old cost of services study. There were those that said that making sure that the city receives the funding and needs to perform the functions to operate the city would stop development as tracks. We assured the council that it would not, and it hasn't. Simply look around the city and see the development that's occurring of all kinds. Commercial, retail, road construction, median improvements, and housing are in full swing. During my review with the council in late October, I was directed to return at midyear with a plan to move our staff forward in anticipation of the return of the economy. In December, I returned with a request for an adjustment to the Building Department staffing. Council approved that as directly related to the construction activity throughout the city. Tonight, you'll be presented with a staff report and presentation by our Finance Director, Terry Willoughby. That shows the growing health of our city and the need to reorganize our workforce and continue to get the best and most out of our current workforce and, albeit painstakingly slow to some, some additional bodies to our employee roster. A section of my report for the Strategic Goals and Priorities Workshop was a detailed plan and a piece regarding our current staff. We have some of the best, brightest, and dedicated staff, and I would like to ensure that we keep them. I'm requesting a few position reclassifications to make sure that those that are working above their title and pay are compensated for that. The proposed reclassifications are vital to us and continue to deliver high service levels. A few positions requested will move temporary staff to employment status. And there's a request to bring aboard a few more staff to continue to increase our ability to provide our customer service to our residents and keep up with the pace of work that continues in that lobby every day. As you'll see tonight, the city's in good financial health, and we continue to move in the right direction, even with our lost $4 million of annual revenue from the state. With that, Terry Willoughby, our Finance Director, has a midyear budget update for you.
And before you go, Terry, do we have any speakers on this topic?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed. Oh, and one other, just a disclosure. The Finance Committee heard this report last week and had no issues with it at that time.
Correct. Thank you for mentioning that. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, I'm presenting updated projections and budgetary items based on the city's operation for the first six months of this fiscal year, as well as some relevant economic information at the local, state, and national levels for your reference. And again, as Mayor mentioned, this information was presented to the Finance Committee for their review on January 29. Topics that'll be covered tonight are fiscal year 13/14 General Fund Midyear Review, a brief overview of other funds outside the general fund, a brief overview of national, state, and local economic conditions, and a look forward to fiscal year 14/15 budget planning and future issues. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the city. These are sources of revenue and functions that are mostly typically associated with government operations. And as such, it's the heart of the city. A summary of the changes we are bringing to you tonight, and as the city manager, Johnson, has mentioned, this is extremely good news. We are expecting an increase in revenues over our original projections of over $3 million. We are, the primary reason for that is increase in development activity. We are requesting some increases in expenditure budgets of $1.9 million. And as city manager has noted, personnel actions totaling $156,000. The net effect of these actions is a surplus of $971,000 that will be falling back into the general fund, fund balance, and increasing that balance. Revenue adjustments, you can see $3 million. The primary component of this is a $2.9 million increase in development-related fees and permits. This is a combination of the implementation of the revised fee schedule based on the adopted cost of services study, as well as an increase in development activity within the city. Total revenue adjustments for the general fund, again, $3,094,000. This chart shows the increase in revenues, the steady growth in sales and property taxes over the years. And you can see the marked increase in development fees that are projected for fiscal year 13/14. This next slide shows the increase in actual activity for development activity within the city. For the first six months of fiscal year 12/13, which was July through December of 2012, 403 building permits were issued. 2,858 building inspections were performed. For the same period in this current fiscal year, 1,058 building permits were issued, which equates to 163% increase in activity. 7,092 building inspections were performed, or 148% increase in activity from year to year. As I stated, we're requesting $1.9 million in various components of expenditures. The primary component of this is a $1.1 million increases to the budgets of the various development departments. These expenditures will be recouped from fees and permits. We need to spend money to make the money. And we need to also keep up with the current level of activity. Also, at the time of budget adoption, we did an across-the-board budget reduction that was shared by all departments in order to present a balanced operating budget to the city council. And we are asking at this time that those funds be restored. There are various other expenditure items that we're seeking increases for. The administrative departments have also seen increases in activity. In the city attorney's budget, we are expecting an additional $75,000 for legal services related to code enforcement activities. Other items include $105,000 of unupdated costs for mandatory fees and memberships for the MPDES program that's within the engineering department, and an increase of $12,000 in the Community Services Department. The majority of that is a $10,000 sponsorship for the Menifee Half Marathon event that was not included in the adopted budget. Again, total expenditures requested $1.9 million. As noted by the city manager, staff is requesting a few personnel actions as part of this midyear review. Working together under the city manager's guidance, we have all worked together, and we are requesting only personnel items that we are believed to be necessary we are requesting only personnel items that we are believed to be necessary, and will ensure that we will increase the operational efficiency and effectiveness of the city, also increase our ability to provide excellent customer service to our residents, and allow us to keep up the pace of the work that we encounter every day. Included in this report are reclassification of existing positions, eight, two replacements of temporary personnel, these are personnel that are employed by temporary agencies that will be converted to full-time staff members, and three new personnel requests. As part of this analysis, staff has also found it is necessary to create eight new position titles. These are not eight new employees, these are merely new titles that have not existed within the city. These positions will be primarily filled by the reclassification of existing employees. And additional details may be found in the staff report in tables three through five of the staff report. The total cost for these personnel actions for this fiscal year is $156,000. This includes salary and benefits for the balance of the year. These positions will be budgeted in full in future fiscal years. The reclassification of existing employees is $18,000. If we were to hire new employees to fill these positions, it would cost over $380,000. To replace temporary employees, which includes converting one part-time employee to full-time position, $27,316, and new personnel requests, $110,561. The total cost, again, for this fiscal year is $156,000. In funds outside the general fund, we have two minor budget adjustments. In the gas tax fund, an annual payment for the Leon Road Cooperative Agreement, this is an agreement that spans several years, it's with the county, it's been council-approved. The annual payment for this year was inadvertently omitted when we did the adopted budget. In the Major A Fund, Riverside County Transportation Commission has notified us that they expect additional revenue over their original projections, so we're asking to increase revenue by $87,000. That's the summary of the two adjustments in the other funds. National economy is improving. We see the unemployment rate is currently 6.7 percent as of December 2013, down from 7.9 percent in the same period in the prior year. Number of unemployed persons in the United States dropped to 10.4 million, a decrease of 1.9 million over the year. Housing and commercial recovery, housing is, continues strong recovery, and commercial will continue recovery as well. State budget update, the governor has estimated ending fiscal year 1314 with a $3 billion reserve in the state's general fund. His proposed fiscal year 2014 budget includes highlights of establishing a rainy day fund mechanism, paying down state debts, providing an additional $4.5 billion for K-12 education, increased funding for community college, but no provision for restoration of VLF revenues. The state economy likewise, similar to the federal, we see the unemployment rates decreasing. And the economists do predict that the economy will continue to grow statewide, real estate is a hot growth area as we're seeing here in the city, and tourism will be made a strong driver of growth. The city of Menifee's unemployment rate also has been dropping, dropped to 9.7 from 11.8 percent in the same time last year. Sales tax receipts, we're still seeing consistent increases. For second quarter 2013, it was a 5.4 percent increase from the same period in the prior These increases reflect the continued efforts of all of our city's staff to focus on economic development in order to generate revenue to sustain our current and future city services. Our assessed values continue to rise, showing our strength, strong economy. Our median home price for the period of January through November 2013, 219,000, it's up from the low of 168,000. Median home prices across the state are much higher, which means that our housing prices make it very affordable and attractive for this region. Looking forward, fiscal year 2014 budget challenges. Fate of the VLF revenue or some substitute for that is still unclear. We need to balance the needs of the city with our economic realities. We're going to have, as our population increases, we'll have increased demand for law enforcement services, and we'll need to manage all of that. We will also need to estimate how long this continued rate of growth in development activity will continue in order to make accurate projections. On a long-term basis, staff will be working to develop a five-year fiscal forecast, and look forward to sharing that with council in the future. And we'll be also working on planning for changes to the retirement system based on changes that CalPERS is implementing. In conclusion, this concludes staff's mid-year budget presentation. Staff recommends approval of the budget adjustments presented and authorization to create the new position titles.
Thank you very much, Terry, for a thorough presentation. Staff, do you have any questions? Excuse me, council, do you have any questions at this juncture? Mr. Furman?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take the mic first. All right. To preserve our independence, we must not let our rulers load us with perpetual debt. I am for government that's rigorously frugal and simple, right? I'm not the first one to say that. Actually, Thomas Jefferson said it in 1786. I think there's, there's too much money here spent that we don't have to spend. One item that I object to is, is returning the budget that, that they cut out of the departments. The departments have been running fine on a skimpyer budget. I haven't seen an effort to fast-track, simplify permits, get permits across the counter. The, this reassignment of reclassification of personnel, I don't think they have any other duties that they have to do, as all I can see is everyone gets a 5 percent raise. That's kind of nice, you have eight positions there that all get 5 percent just because they got a new title. The new employees, I want to give you an example. There's a request for another code enforcement officer. I'm going to give you a couple of examples. In Mr. August's district, there's a code enforcement driving around, giving notice of violations for people putting their trash can out the evening before, or having a, a sign or a monogram on a commercial vehicle parked in your driveway. If we could afford to use our existing code enforcement officers in that manner, I don't see where we need another code enforcement officer. And I'd also like to, a clarification on this one here by Mr. Johnson. Increase revenue to enhance focus. Could you explain what that means to me?
Well, page one. Where are you at, sir?
On page two, it says you're increasing revenues to enhance focus.
I can speak to that, Mr. Furman.
Yes, go ahead.
We're expecting the code enforcement fine revenue to be $150,000 more than what I originally anticipated based on our actual receipts.
Based on collection of more fines?
Correct. More activity, more revenue.
More activity, more fines, more revenue, and, and more harassment of the citizens of our city. That's how I look at it. In my opinion, we should, we should reduce the red tape. Some of the stuff should be over the counter. Also, I was, I was not happy with the comment made on page two especially, that if you needed more detailed information, go to the website and see what the job application and description means. If, if you're hiring somebody under this description, why do I have to research the application and the requirements for that? All right? It should have been, it should have been in here. All right, so myself, I can't, I can't approve this budget as it is. I think it needs a lot more work, it needs some red tape taken out of it, and it needs some, some scissors to cut some of it out.
I just want to clarify something with Mr. Furman because it is my district. The code enforcement people you're talking about citing people for garbage cans left out, that's SCCA code enforcement, not the city code enforcement.
Mr. Edgerton?
Well, excuse me. I, I, I'll make some comments that where I, I do have some agreement with, Mr. Furman for some different reasons. I'm going to, are you listening, Mr. Sullivan back there? I'm going to support the staff again tonight. I have a concern about how we're getting our funds. I, I'm concerned about too much emphasis on development. Some of us are going to be trying to put the brakes on residential development unless it's higher end, as you know statistically, it's a push on the lower end of residences because of the service you have to provide. On the higher end, it's a positive. But my concern also is about the density. You know, you can get a, you might get a whack out of apartments or something like that. Some of us are going to be opposing that kind of development in the future. I don't know how that may or may not affect your calculations. The other are fees. Some of us are going to have some concern about raising fees, particularly on our small businesses. On the other side of the equation, some of us are going to be pushing not only high-end homes, we're going to be pushing commercial. We want to put an emphasis on sales tax revenue. That's usually the number one, as you know, return for a city. Development is temporary, sales tax is permanent, and if we have the right kind of policies and we are business-friendly, we can make that grow. Also, having said that, just putting my 101 hat on, if you'll forgive me, public administration, and not just necessarily referring to Rob Johnson, but particularly when you have newer cities across, any city, and you're trying to expand your staff, your city manager is going to be an advocate to, for his staff, and he's going to be trying to push the wages up and make his staff happy. And it's up to the council to put a brake, if we think he's moving too fast, in pushing for his staff and pushing for these increases in pay. On the other, on the other side of the equation, and I'm speaking generically of city managers, not just of Rob Johnson, if you, if you take too much control away from a city manager to the point where the staff feels they're getting short shrift, then you're going to get a movement toward unionization. Now you've got another can of worms. I would hope that we could maintain a good management and a good fiscal budget under our city manager rather than to have to deal with unionization. And I, I do think what he's trying to do here, based on what staff has done and, and what he has to work with, I, I think they're reasonable, and I'm going to support staff's position here.
I'm sorry, could I clarify one thing? The number of inspections and building permits, when you see that increase, that's not solely residential, that does include commercial for your, and those revenue estimates are based on projects that are already approved and kept moving through the pipeline this year. So I do understand your concern about development and how it affects our future forecasting.
Thank you, Terry. Good, good presentation.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
The motion to approve, Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye now.
Councilmember August, and Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, for that report. And Mr. Johnson, we're going to continue to be supportive of you, as Mr. Edgerton stated, because as activity continues, we need to be prepared for that activity. And I think that that was a great report, and I'm most excited about the fact that we have been able to restore money to the general fund that we dipped into, and we made that right, plus some. So, thank you for that. Onto the next item, 12.5, discuss consideration of funding of Boys and Girls Club of Menifee and give direction to staff. Is there a staff report on this?
Just a couple of brief words. Mr. Mayor, Mayor, and Ms. Council, we have an item before you to discuss the Boys and Girls Club funding for Menifee. It would come out of uncommitted reserve funds. There's some $7 million in uncommitted reserve funds to be used for one-time purposes such as what you're going to discuss. Similar to what we did with the memorandum of understanding with the Chamber of Commerce, we contracted with them for a certain dollar amount, and we expected through the MOU that they were going to provide services that the city couldn't provide to the business community. That could be a similar track that you discuss now for and with the Boys and Girls Club of Menifee, and we, we stand ready to answer any questions you might have. But at this point in time, the money would come out of uncommitted reserve funds.
All right, are there speakers on this item?
Yes, sir.
I'll take those speakers now.
The Girls and Boys Club of America organizations are financially independent of any city, state, or government funding, and they have always run on fees paid by parents who utilize their services and donations. To date, the Menifee Boys and Girls Club Board has obtained a three-year contract with the Menifee Valley Elementary School trustees, and only have to pay $25 a year, have received a donated bus, free sports equipment, games, and furnishings from donations by the public. They have filed for federal tax exemptions and submitted an application for membership in the Boys and Girls Club of America. The Boys and Girls Club is a great organization that caters to the needs of parents with minor children, but runs its organization on a mix of fees paid by parents and donations from the public. It does not burden all the taxpayers of a service they do not use or need. Back on August 14th, 2013, the Chair, Sue Christensen, stated to the Press Enterprise that the local organization will have no problem funding donations. In Menifee, there are large benefactors who are known to be generous, such as Kohl's and local Indian casinos. She also stood before the city council and stated she did not need the city's money, she would get it done with or without the council's help. Now they come before the city council with the aid of the interim city manager and ask the city to support and finance their organization with our tax dollars. The city does not financially support Sun City Concern, The Cupboard, or any other nonprofit organization with taxpayers' dollars who cater to a small segment of the population. The city council authorized financial assistance to Crime Watch because they volunteer to serve the entire city. If the need is so great in Menifee and the membership and donations are flowing in, then Menifee Boys and Girls Club should be able to support itself and not burden all the taxpayers of Menifee with another debt. Federal grants of $5,000 to $10,000 are given out each year by the city council to any organization who apply. The Boys and Girls Club should apply to subsidize, subsidize their organization and not take the taxpayers' dollars to financially support them. If the membership or donations are not there, then clearly the need for a Boys and Girls Club in Menifee is not that great, and it would not be able to keep its doors open without creating another debt on the taxpayers of Menifee every year. Should, the taxpayers of Menifee should not be subsidized, should not subsidize on the backs of taxpayers without a vote from the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, staff. I'm going to read a letter from Dr. Greenberg, who was taken ill today. I got lucky, I get to read it. So, again, this is from Dr. Greenberg. Mayor Mann, distinguished city council members, and member of the public. Good evening, I'm Jonathan Greenberg, Superintendent of the High, of the High School District, which includes Paloma Valley High School and Heritage High School in Menifee. I am so proud of these two schools, their teachers, and support staff, and of course, the great Menifee students who attend these two schools. Tonight, I come before you not to talk to you about our two high schools in Menifee, I come before you tonight to strongly urge your support for the new Boys and Girls Club of Menifee. I do so recognizing that the city of Menifee does not have unlimited financial resources, and that there are some residents who would tell you that you should spend your money, spend more of your budget on other issues and concerns. Well, I am here tonight to educate everyone on why an investment in the Boys and Girls Club by the city pays dividend, dividends throughout the city. There is a significant amount of research that shows communities with vibrant Boys and Girls Clubs see decreases in student, in juvenile crime. In other words, latchkey students, mostly elementary and middle school students, do not have a lot of options before school, after school, or during vacation time. Many of our parents of school-age children drive great distances in order to reside in Menifee. They simply, they simply cannot find or cannot afford after-school care for their children. Let me inform the public of a sobering statistic. More than 50 percent of the students that attend Paloma Valley High School are in poverty. Heritage High School is approximately 65 percent. I strongly urge the council tonight to support the newly-formed Boys and Girls Club of Menifee. In so doing, you will be supporting an organization that has its purpose to offer an organization that has its purpose to offer athletics, enrichment, homework help to the young people of Menifee. While your support tonight will help many young people and their families, you will also be supporting all the citizens of Menifee in a proactive manner by offering healthy choices for those people who will be our future neighbors, leaders, and productive members of first society. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. August, did you have a question?
Is that all the speakers?
Yeah, do we have another speaker?
Yes.
Okay.
No questions.
Okay.
Bill Zimmerman.
Good evening, Council Bill Zimmerman. Uh, tonight, I'm, uh, here speaking in behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, in which I'm a board member. Uh, I think, uh, some of you know, we held a family day back in December, and just wanted to say we appreciate those of you who were there in attendance. Uh, and those of you who couldn't, uh, I'd like to just extend an invitation to you right now to, if you'd like, come and take a tour. Uh, and we'd be happy to show you around. I think what you'll find is that we've got a perfect facility, uh, that's ready to go, but sadly, it stands vacant, and it's unused. And, uh, we, we can see the finish line on this thing that we've been working on for a couple of years. It's right there. It's right in our grasp. Um, you know, besides the main administration rooms that are there and the rec room, we also have two full wings that have seven classrooms. Uh, those classrooms, we're considering earmarking for art, training, a couple of classrooms for music training. Uh, we'd like to have the Arts Council Menifee, uh, kind of work with us to, to help provide art instruction. Um, and additionally, we're considering, uh, planning a room that's dedicated to the Historic Association. Uh, those members and historians can provide educational benefits to the Boys and Girls, uh, youth that are attending. It's kind of a symbiotic relationship because these organizations really need a place, uh, to have their own, to house their curations, uh, to store supplies, and, and if you imagine, kind of a mini museum that it, that is open to the public for historic, uh, people to use. It also is helping the kids. So, uh, you know, they've got their displays and their artifacts and things like that. So these are things that we're working out. I guess the point that I'm making with all that is that funding that we're, that we're asking for, uh, will support more than just the Boys and Girls Club itself. There are other groups, uh, that are gonna benefit. So, uh, again, this is the last piece of the puzzle. Uh, tonight, the request is to help complete our startup fund requirements. And, and, uh, we heard from, uh, one member of the public who was saying that this shouldn't come from the, uh, taxpayer. Well, we're not asking for an annual commitment. We're, what it is, is the Boys and Girls Club organization requires that we have a certain amount of money in the bank before we can hire that executive director. And that is the last piece. As soon as we have that, our doors are open, and then we have the students coming, and we have membership, and we have, uh, lots of fundraisers and galas and things like that that are going to, to basically support this as we move forward. But we have this final hurdle right here, and that's kinda, kinda what's coming to you tonight. So, um, anyway, with that, I'll just, uh, say, you know, again, this is a positive place for our kids, and we certainly would, uh, hope that you would support it, and we're all counting on you for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there another speakers? Any more speakers?
No, sir. No.
Okay. Mr. August.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I wanna go first on this before I go to sleep tonight, but I wanna, I'm gonna pretty much agree with everything Ms. Pika said, the, the general idea. I don't disagree with Mr. Cronky. I don't disagree with Bill Zimmerman, whoever, whoever else spoke, uh, on behalf of the, uh, the good work that the Boys and Girls Club does. Uh, we heard, we've got some figures tonight earlier from Ms. Christensen, $7,000 they raised. They want $60,000. We heard from Mr. Zimmerman that they don't want any funds next year. How do we obviously know that? We heard from our, uh, friend up here, Mr. Thurman, that he thinks they're gonna be self-sufficient, uh, next, next year's. Um, I, you know, I, I don't know how he would even, uh, hazard, uh, a guess on that, but hopefully, he's right. I also see Ms. Carol Sullivan out there from Sun City Concern. She's a 501(c)(3). She stands in line with all the other com- community development block grant programs, and I see no reason, and no disrespect to Sue or the work she's done, but I feel that she has to, she can stand in the same line as Ms. Sullivan and petition for community development block grants. And I'm sure the public and the people that make those decisions will be very, very supported by the Boys and Girls Club. So I am, uh, going to, uh, I'll just let you know, I'm gonna vote against it. Thank you.
Mr. Furman.
I, uh, I liked your comments, uh, Bill. This, basically, how I'm looking at this, that, uh, you need a checking account balance to just keep on your books. And, uh, I just, I just saw the council on the last vote just spend 30 times that much money in raises and, and, uh, uh, extra money that, uh, the budget, uh, uh, that Mr. Johnson wanted. 30 times what you're asking for. And I myself wa- is, uh, I am in support of, of basically putting up the money. It might, I, I considered an investment in the future. Uh, some people may say it's, it's other things, but the, what I see here, uh, like you say, when I saw the money that just got spent here tonight, 30, 60,000 is a drop in the bucket. A, another concern that might be a possible suggestion, okay, could the money be paid back later on in life to the city? Could it, could it be taken as a loan from the city? Uh, um, really, uh, it's just, it's just an option to be thought about it. Myself, I still support, uh, uh, giving you the 60,000.
Are there other council comments? Mr. Denver? Okay. Mr. Edgerton?
First of all, I wanna, um, congratulate Sue Christensen for her dogged approach for a good cause, and, uh, top marks to you, Sue. Um, and Bill, the last time you were up here, I supported you, um, in, in your last ditch stand, and, uh, we did get you, we did get you some money. My concern a- a- about this, and Sue, as you already know, I put, uh, as a representative of the RTA, I put you guys on a list so that you would get a bus. My concern at the time, when I spoke to Larry Rubio, was that, as you said, Sue, you'd only raised 7,000 so far, so I was looking for you to become more viable. And you were gonna have that time, just based on the fact that I put you on the list, and so you would go through a period of time, and Marion jumped in there, uh, Marion Ashley, bless his heart, and he has the SWAT, and he put it on fast track. Um, and I'm glad he did, and I'm, I'm glad he gave you some money and that sort of thing. It's, I think it's a, I think it's a great cause. I, I really have a lot of consternation out of this, any 501(c)(3) or any of these programs coming out of general funds. That's a totally different track that we would be taking. Uh, the city manager mentioned that we deal with the Chamber of Commerce. That's in every city. Every city deals with the Chamber of Commerce. 501(c)(3)'s are generally good causes. Um, and we like to support them, but we do that through CDBG grant funds. Um, and if, if, once you start down the road of using taxpayers' money, i- it has some implications. First of all, the organization needs to go to the community to try to get those fees. At this point, they've only raised $7,000. So, and I appreciate what you're trying to do. You're trying to get a full-time person so you can have a permanent fundraiser. But I think the city, the taxpayer themselves need to have, to be able to provide a response and, and, and give you some of that money. Otherwise, what the city's doing is saying, I tell you what, taxpayer doesn't seem to wanna volunteer that money. We're gonna take it from them and, and, and see to it, you know, that you get the money. Whereas, if you were to come up here and say, I, I wanna push this grant proposal, and I want a grant, totally different. I, I would hope you would get a grant. Uh, but if, when you're using taxpayer money, we are, we are short in our budget. Uh, we tell everybody it's balanced, which is true. We do not have the, uh, amount of police that we would, we would like to have. Um, we have all kinds of, we talked about Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts. We have other Boys and Girls Clubs, Myriad at Temecula. Uh, we heard Valleywide speaking of all of the programs, you know, that they have. Um, last city I worked in had a health department. If you wanted to start listing the priorities in this city, it's a long page. And again, um, it's a great cause, but you're, it's one of many, many causes. And, um, I'm not gonna be like the liberal Democrats in Sacramento and say, hey, it's a good cause, therefore, I'm gonna spend the taxpayers' money. Uh, I, I will fight for you for grant money. Uh, I do like your cause.
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, I obviously misspoke when I said $7,000 because the 80,000 that we have committed so far is fundraising. We went and we solicited funds from the county supervisor. We put in a grant application to, um, and actually, even the 7,000 is more than that. We've received 5,000 from Southern California Edison, a thousand from SoCal Gas. Um, we received 5,000 prior to that from Marion Ashley to sponsor an event. Um, so we've, we've done our work in, in fundraising. So to say that we failed in that vein is really quite unfair. So, but I think, but I think that I misstated it, so I'm, I'm gonna do the benefit of the doubt here. But ultimately, we're up over 90,000 in our own fundraising. So I think we were worthy of the RTA bus. Uh, I think we are worthy of the city partnering with us to serve not a small part of our community, by the way, the largest part of our community, if you look at the census data, and that's factual. So we have parents that commute outside the city because they can't work here. They need somewhere for their kids to be. We have a great organization in Valleywide. We have a great organization in Marty's, um, Learning Center. It's still not enough. These are the people of our community, the children and the parents, and they need this. And I am coming to you to tell you that these are the people that you serve who need this.
Well, Sue, uh, we're in agreement on what you're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Plot as.
I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. And we're agree, we're in agreement on the fact that it's a good cause. Uh, we may have some disagreements on the viability of your budget going forward and whether we would need to continue to fund it in the future, but I think that's another issue because my issue is not funding you. My issue is how we fund you. I have a real problem when we dip in to, um, general taxpayers' funds. We can push for you
Mm-hmm.
in a different way.
Okay.
Mr. Denver.
Um, I'm in favor of this. I am, there's no one on the council that's a more conservative person than me, but, uh, this is a portion of our community that's really desperately underserved. We build roads. We're spending lots of money on that, and that's important. We, uh, overpasses, we're doing fire, fire and police. Um, the, it's just, these things are very, very important. If you, I sell real estate, and one of the big problems in Menifee is that parents, especially out in my district, just don't have a place to put their kids that they can afford. And in the after-school, uh, before-school, and the kids that statistically, who are on their own, are latchkey kids, get in a lot of trouble. In my district, um, some of the kids get in a lot of trouble. This will be very beneficial for the kids in my area. Uh, this will be a good thing for the kids in all our areas. I, if the, if she was asking for money every year, or even was talking about it every year, I'd say no, right now. I'm talking about a startup amount of money. I'm talking about if she wants any more money, every year, there's CDBG funds. Uh, apply like everybody else. Um, I'm not, I'm not discussing, uh, continuing doing this. I, I'm saying right now, I'll vote no next year. Maybe CDBG, help her with a grant. Wally and I agree on that. I think that's fine. But this has to be started up. This is, this is a school, and if, and, and it's, it helps kids like a school, and you need some money to start. We need to partner with them. We need the city logo up there. We need them to know that we care about them when they started. And so I think we ought to vote yes on this particular time, once.
I'm generally supportive of the organization and the cause. Um, there are, uh, many, many times where you have a triple P situation, a public-private partnership, where there's startup capital that's, that's provided by a public agency. I mean, just look what the school district has done for you, given you a three-year lease of $25 a year. What really, what is the real value? A $1 a year. I mean, what, when you take that into consideration and say, well, how much would we have to rent this facility from? That's really the donation in kind. I mean, for crying out loud, the, uh, the, uh, the trust that owns Camp Pendleton, uh, the, all the acreage on Camp Pendleton gets, gets renewed every 25 years for a dollar. And so there are ways to make this happen. I, um, I'm in agreement with Mr. Edgerton in terms of the CDBG. I'm also in agreement with Mr. Furman and Mr. Denver to provide a little startup capital. I'm not convinced that it needs to be 65,000, and I'm not convinced that it needs to happen right now. We just did a semi-annual budget adjustment, and I would like to have this, my, my preference would be to identify amount that you truly need, let the city manager know, and then we build it into the budget process for the 14, 15 fiscal year as we go through this budget development season. That's, that's my position. I'm supportive, generally. I don't think the amount needs to be that much, but I'm not willing to, I'm, I'm unwilling to vote on it tonight, to fund it tonight. I think it needs to be in the budgetary process. Mr. Furman?
I think, I think the problem, as I see it, that the, uh, this takes the Boys and Girls Club to a screeching halt. Is, is that correct?
Yes.
It actually just puts, closes the doors, puts boards over it, and, and
Well, it delays it significantly.
it's gotta stop.
It delays it significantly.
And then we gotta take all that stuff that Scott donated back to his garage.
Which was a whole, what, three truckloads?
Yeah, and I know he doesn't, he doesn't wanna that stuff back in his new house, for sure.
Wouldn't fit.
Yeah, so I, uh, th- this is, this is a problem I want you guys to realize. I mean, they're boarding the doors up, okay, and, until they, they get the startup fee, all right? They're probably ready to go for the next school season, or sooner. As I can see, you're ready to go right away.
Spring break.
Yeah, I mean, they can, they can open in Easter. They can run through the, the school year. Uh, what you're talking about is board the place up till next fall. I said, I don't, I don't wanna do that.
Let, let me compare and contrast, though. Uh, Mr. Nelson, who, uh, just went through a process, I mean, he, Mr. Nelson has this foundation where in, uh, he, he went out and got donations. They far exceeded $350,000. They got a, they got a house donated to the donation, to the foundation that he's running. Um, all private money, not one dime of taxpayer dollars. And, and, and I, I'm a little, I appreciate you clarifying the fundraising act. I am a little surprised that fundraising activity's so low, with all the type A personalities that you have on your board, and all the connections that you guys have on your board. I am a little surprised at how low those donations are.
We're also 12 people who work full-time and are trying to put this together.
I know, so do I.
We have, we have, one of our board members rose to your challenge, Mr. Mayor, and he got us the school site for a dollar a year. You asked for a business plan. We produced one for you. You gave your input. Um, it was a good business plan. It's a viable business plan.
Yep.
This is what, my, my voicemail is full of people calling. So do I now tell them that their city is unsupportive? I don't mean to be combative here, but these are, these are your constituents also. I just wanna say that these are your constituents also.
We're not unsupportive. Um, there's several, there are several comments up here. I, I'm not willing to support it tonight. I want it to be part of the budgetary process. I think we need to know what the amount it needs to, to be, and I, I want, I have no problem with contributing to startup capital. I have no problem with it, but I'm unwilling to fund it tonight. If you guys wanna lay the, lay the, uh, item over for further discussion?
No.
Um, then you can do that. But I, you know, I've, that's my thought, is to put it in the budgetary process. I don't, I don't, I don't understand the difference between funding it now or funding it on July 1.
Four months of no service. That would be the difference.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, uh, if you wish.
Not asking you anything, Ms. Pika.
Hold on, I got a question yet.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Furman?
Uh...
Uh, Mr. Johnson. If this policy was funded, like you say, through the budgetary process, when would they get a check?
July 1st. Can't, can't cut a check before the budget starts. The budget year starts July 1st.
Yeah, and would that, was July 1st when it would be approved? Or when it would be voted on?
No, the bu, the budget's typically approved, uh, two weeks prior to the July 1st, uh, start of the budget year. So usually the second council meeting in June, it would be approved. And, uh, but it wouldn't be able to be spent until the new budget year, new fiscal year starts July 1.
Uh, one more, one more question, okay? To, uh, you, you, you three on the council. If it was brought in the budgetary process, would you approve it?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm telling, publicly stating that I would be supportive of it.
So.
Why did someone make that motion?
So then what, what we're actually telling these people is to board up their school until July 1, or get a loan that they can repay back on July 1. Those, those are their only two options if we say no tonight.
I don't see how they board up their shop, but go ahead, Mr. Edgerton.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm just going to make a motion that, um, we receive and file this motion tonight. I think if, if, if we're going to be talking about it at budget time, once again, come, coming back to the issue, are we going to support a 501(c)(3)? Are we going to start down that path with all these good causes using general tax money? And I think, um, philosophically, you're going to get a lot of legitimate blowback from the community. They are not going to be happy when we start down that slippery slope. Um, I will be pushing later on for grant funding because I do support your program. But I, I'm not, I'm not going to a general fund for a 501(c)(3) good cause. So that's my motion, just receive and file.
Mr. Denver?
If, uh, Mr. Mayor, if a motion was made to fund them in the next cycle, July 1, would you vote for that?
Yes, I would.
I'll make, uh, I'd like to make an alternative motion. No.
Mr. Johnson?
How about the intent? The MCAC is reviewing applications. I do believe Boys and Girls Club is an applicant to the CDBG program, but they're, it's different funding. There, those are, that, that money is set aside to run the actual programming. It is not set aside as a one-time capital gift, and...
I'm not talking about CDBG funds.
I thought you just mentioned that.
No, in the budget, in the upper budget.
I bet, I apologize.
And so I'd make a motion to put it in the bud, in the budget for the next, uh, year. And so it would be delivered in July 1, and if I could get a second.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, Mr. August. You had your light on.
Anyway, I don't like that motion at all. I, I would be willing to accept the fact that you want to bring it back at a time in the future. But for you, for us to be putting this on and spending money that we haven't even budgeted for yet, that we don't even know if we have. I mean, let's get real about this. Come on, if, vote on it later. Do what Mr. Edgerton said. Just put it aside, and we'll vote on it later, but...
Well, I think the motion is just to, uh, put a line item in the 14, 15 budget. That's all that we're voting on tonight. We'll all have another opportunity twice, uh, to review the budget, uh, and then make a, we, we have to vote on it in June anyway. So all we're doing, all, all this motion does tonight is, uh, gives direction to staff to, to put it in the, the 14, 15 budget.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
Um, why would I put it in the budget if I didn't intend on voting for it?
Vote no.
Well, and I, I would on your motion. Um, again, to me, it's the process, and you start using general fund for 501(c)(3)'s. And, um, furthermore, I, I, I personally think that, uh, and I strongly support our city manager, Don. Uh, but, um, I think it's tough for you to take a position, uh, Mr. City Manager. After all, you were part of the board of this organization. Uh, you're not now. Um, and I appreciate your strong, uh, support of, of the very good people involved. But again, I think we're setting an example here that is not a place where we want to go as a city. This, this is wrong to be going for good causes out of general taxpayers' money when we can go a grant process.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The, the item's on the agenda tonight because Mr. Denver asked for it and Mr. August seconded it. Uh, I was on the steering committee. I did attend three meetings for the Boys and Girls Club 12 months ago, uh, maybe longer than that. Never been a board member. Uh, generally, I'm supportive of youth organizations that help AM PM after-school care. But the reason it's on the agenda tonight is it was asked for by a council member and seconded.
Thank you. Mr. Furman?
The grant program, okay? Isn't it definite, uh, it's a definite amount of money? Is the ceiling of $60,000 available to the CDBG grant?
There is a portion, uh, for, uh, service organizations to apply for. Typically, it's near 65, $70,000. We, what we've done in the past, council's done in the past, um, is, is split that into making sure that five or so organizations can, uh, benefit from the application and splitting that money up into equal parts. So, uh, it, it is available at, at one shot should the council, uh, decide, uh, to, to go that route. Uh, I believe the Menifee Citizens Advisory Committee is meeting on Monday night. Is that correct? To review application summary for CDBG? Or is that in two weeks?
That is correct. It's Monday night.
That is Monday night.
Um, also, the CDBG public service program is restricted to funding for low, moderate income. So that, that would be, have to be their client base for that.
Yeah, so the, so the best shot they would have would be getting one-fifth of the money that would be available would probably be their best shot.
Correct, and then they would have to perform, uh, the function to ensure that that money is going to low-to-modern-income folks to, uh, to accommodate them for the programming. Yeah.
Mr. August?
I, I just want to, again, chime in with what, what your people are doing here. You gotta, and I don't understand the budget process as well as you people do. But you're sitting here and you're all saying... What?
Can't hear it.
You can't?
No.
Okay. Um, you're sitting here basically all saying, I'm going to spend the money. I'm going to vote for it. I'm going to vote for it. I'm going to vote for it. And the only thing that's holding you in that hasn't been budgeted for, but we all know the money's there. So that, I, I, this seems to me to be a little game going on. Why don't you put it on the ballot and vote on it tonight? Why, 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 why play this little game about, you know, waiting until it's budgeted? We all know what you're going to vote for, so vote for it now.
Well, because I'm not convinced, that, I'm assuming that the question's to me. I'm not convinced that the, uh, I'm not convinced that we be, need to be giving them $65,000. That's my point. Um, so I want to have a little bit more staff interaction with the organization. I want to have a, a cooperative agreement, just like we, we give the Chamber of Commerce $25,000. We paid, we, we funded, uh, we put $25,000 towards the Veterans Memorial. The fact that we, and those are general fund dollars. I mean, the, the, these councils, past and present, have done those things. I think that, uh, somewhere in there is, is the right answer in terms of a funding level, uh, for some startup capital. But for us to make up the complete and utter balance for, for what they need in order to hire an executive director, um, I, I'm not there. I'm not convinced of that. So, uh, the fact that staff just went through a budgetary process and the mid-year budget adjustments during this meeting, um, I think that the point that I'm trying to make is is that I'm not ready to, to fund it tonight. And I'd rather have it in the budgetary process.
What, what, how's it going to read in the budgetary? What, what, how does that?
Well, it'll be, uh, it'll be a line item in the budget. What, uh, i, if this were, if this were to be in the budget, in answer to Mr. August's question, where would a line item in the budget be? What fund? Community services?
Most likely, community services.
So, any event, that's the amount.
Why don't, why don't we just call for the questions, see how it goes, and get questions called?
All right.
Look, I, I'm sorry, can you, um, Madam Clerk, I, I think we've got this Kabuki dance of where we're going to support it anyway, but we'd like to have a little cover that we're not using general funds.
I don't do any dance, so I'll go ahead and try to read the substitute motion. The substitute motion is to place a line item in the 14, 15 budget for consideration of funding the Boys and Girls Club. That was seconded, made by Councilmember Denver and seconded by Councilmember Furman.
That is the motion and second. Call for the question.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
No.
Councilmember Furman.
Yes.
Councilmember August.
No.
Councilmember Denver.
Yes.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Motion carries.
On to Agenda Item 12.6, Amendment to Decorum Policy to Create Direction for Staff to Itemize Councilmembers Receiving Contributions From Developers on City's Website. Are there any speakers on this item and/or do we have a staff report? Huh?
We, we do have a staff report by your city attorney.
Uh-huh.
And I would like to speak...
Take speakers first or second?
Since it was my motion, I'd like to speak to it first, if I may.
Um, would you, uh, let me ask you a question.
Because I'll be speaking to the staff report, which we received.
So I would like to, I, I'd like to hear the staff report first, and then Mr. Edgerton, and then we'll take speakers.
Okay. Um, the, the staff report merely outlines exactly the provisions that were included in the, uh, motion by the council at the meeting on January 22, uh, as submitted to the council by Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor, Mayor Edgerton. Uh, the action that was required at that time was that it come back as a, as an addendum to the rules of decorum because there was some question as to how to do this. And so, uh, as a matter of fact, the, the, uh, sentiment at the time was to just enact the motion and let it be. And instead, because it is a policy, we wanted to put it somewhere. So we put it, we agreed that it would go back and come back as a, an amendment to the, uh, rules of decorum. So that has been prepared, and there is a rules of decorum policy that includes in almost entirely verbatim the, uh, recommendation of Mr. Edgerton. Uh, in addition to that, there was direction, because there was some, uh, opposition to the, uh, to the idea and some concern about the idea, that we prepare a memorandum and advise the council about any legal actions. And so we have done that, and that is before you. I believe it was sent out Monday to the members of the council, and it's in your red folder. Uh, essentially, what the legal review says and, uh, and uncovered is that there, there is a way certainly to do a regulation like this, but there is concern about the structure of it because it goes only to members of the council as opposed to all candidates for office, all filers of the various forms. So we have identified the, the questions with regard to that, and, um, there we go. I'm sorry, I'm getting unpacked here. Uh, and presented that to the council. Essentially, there are three issues. Um, first of all is this question of the application, application of the policy to all candidates to be able to get on this pledge list. The pledge list is designed to highlight those members of the council who agree not to take money from developers across the board. Uh, if you sign up for that and then you abide by that, your name goes on the pledge list, which is on a special site on the, the city council website. That re, gets reviewed at 12 months and at 18 months, as I understand it, uh, to, to assure that your actions match the words. In addition to which, at every opportunity where a development pros, project comes before the council, the mayor is directed to inquire of all members of the council as to whether they have accepted any contribution, contribution from the developer in excess of $150. If a member acknowledges that that has occurred in that meeting, he is then required to, to explain why that's not a conflict of interest or recuse himself for the vote, from the vote. The determination of who goes on the pledge list is left with the city clerk, and the city clerk is directed to review all of the financial forms and identify the various contributors who may be part of the, the specified parties who are prohibited, which includes developers, contractors, um, employees, people seeking employment with the city, and their friends and relatives, their agents and relatives. So that, that's what's covered in it. Um, in that regard, there's a concern about the use of the city clerk for that purpose, which is a purpose of identifying compliant members of the council, highlighting them on the website, thereby promoting them as, uh, individuals who have not accepted funds and have abided by the pledge. Um, and then there is also the, the, uh, concern about directing the city clerk to basically make judgments based on what she knows, uh, and in going through the, uh, the filings. That poses a, an issue as to whether or not that's using a public resource for a political purpose, particularly in light of the fact that the policy does not extend to non-incumbents, which means that they can never appear, whether they want to, uh, to abide by the pledge, whether they want to swear they're going to do it or not. Their names will not appear on the pledge sign. So there are some issues there with all of this. In addition to which, and we've highlighted the various legal concerns or cases and so on, there is a concern that, that there may be a First Amendment challenge. I don't think it's a significant concern with regard to gifts, but with regard, regard to campaign contributions, which by law are exempted from either income or gift classifications. Um, there's clearly a state policy that the, these need not be disclosed on various forums other than on the campaign forums where all candidates disclose them. So there, there is a, there's a disconnect, if you will, between what the state requires and what the city would be requiring. One of the things I did in terms of the memorandum was to attach three policies from other neighboring jurisdictions where they have in fact done special rules, more intense rules, more restrictive rules than the state law provides. And that is permitted, but each of those ties directly into the Public Records Act. Each of them applies to, across the board, to campaigns, uh, et cetera. They are, they are different from what was done here. There is no case law that says that what you've proposed is valid or invalid. So it is really a matter of the council deciding whether you want to take the risk of being challenged, which may or may not occur. And even if it does occur, you can always repeal the policy, yet rather than do war with, with a challenge. But we have just tried to explain what, in the context of the, the Political Reform Act and the disclosure requirements that are contained there, how this policy, uh, fits in and where we think there are weaknesses. So have at it. Whatever you wish to do is fine. Uh, you've received advice, uh, from this office.
Mr. Edgerton, and then speakers.
Okay, um, well, Ms. Biggs, I want to thank you for a rather exhaustive report. It's, um, in some ways, more information than I think we needed. You're, you're putting forth some, uh, court cases which are concerned about ordinances and statutory law. We're talking about a voluntary proposition here. I think you're talking about, uh, the possibility that it could be challenged, and I think that's rather problematic. Uh, definitely, uh, after 40 years of teaching this subject, I see no challenge to the First Amendment. Nevertheless, um, whether it could conceivably be challenged or not, you brought up two good points that I strongly agree with, and they were easily modified. Uh, one, you said you had a concern about this being placed, uh, in part as a discretionary matter of the city clerk having to review and evaluate it. So number one, and, and I'm in agreement with you. And if it were not to be challenged, I don't think it would be. I, I, I think it's legal, but I still agree with you. I see no reason to put this on the city clerk. Uh, so I would amend... So I would amend the original motion that we have already passed, or the majority of the council has passed, to say that what it takes to get on the list, the requirements would be the same, is that a councilperson would simply give a written request to the city clerk, saying, "I want to be put on that list, and I have met the requirements." That's all a city clerk needs. She puts it on the list. She makes no decision. A guy can be standing in front of her, and somebody can be stuffing money in his pocket right in front of her, that is not her concern. All she's got is a request from a city councilperson, based on a decorum policy passed by the council, put the name on the list. So she has no work, she has no decisions, she has no responsibility. That resolves that issue, and I agree with you on that. The second issue, I think during election time, the city clerk can do the same thing. If a candidate says, "Well, I meet those standards, I would like to be placed on the list," if indeed it is already a candidate, as, as a candidate in good standing as a candidate, just put the name on the list. You would then have two factors. First of all, it's voluntary, doesn't challenge the First Amendment. If some councilperson wants to say, "To hell with it, I don't want to mess with it, I'm gonna take developer funds, the developer fund says I'm gonna give them," there's nothing to stop that. This is totally voluntary. Nevertheless, it is a position, if it passes, of a majority of the council, it's the decorum policy. We can respond if a councilperson wants to act that way. And you can say, "Well, what keeps somebody, some councilperson from getting on the list if what you've just described, all I have to do is make a request, from not having met the requirements?" That's up to the rest of the council. In other words, it's not only gonna be voluntary, the regulatory portion of it is up to the council. So we leave the staff out of it, which I think was your, one of your primary concerns, and I agree with you. And secondly, in reference to a candidate, that's at an election time, that's up to other people to point out if something's wrong. So again, I would simply modify what has already been passed by stating that the city clerk would put the name of, of a councilperson on the list, simply by getting a letter of request stating, "I want to be on the list, I meet the requirements," and signing it. That's it. She has no decision to make, she just does that. Secondly, would be the same thing with a candidate. And any regulations involved, any concerns, would be handled by the council.
The only, the only last word on that, I would say, is that the authority to do this under the Political Reform Act requires that you adopt an ordinance and that that ordinance be filed with the state. So yes, that could be done, but we would have to do it in a two-step process with the ordinance, the first and second reading.
Oh, excuse me, all I'm doing is extending our decorum policy.
Well, but you're also...
Our internal decorum policy, that's all I'm doing.
But you're regulating the, the disclosure during a campaign by applying it to everyone, which I think it should be applied to everyone. And as you do that, that's a variation from the Political Reform Act, which is fine, you can do that, but it requires that it be enacted by ordinance. That's, that's all.
That it requires what?
That it be enacted by ordinance, so that it's, so that it stay, so that it can be filed with the state, and then it becomes a law, so it's enforceable as to the candidates and to the incumbents.
Enforceable. My, my concern is you gave us some, some other options that you picked out. One of them was out in the valley, and that one bothered me a great deal. I mean, people are being thrown in jail, are being fined. I'm not looking for that. I'm looking for a decorum policy that we have already voted on. It is voluntary, and if you're telling me that we can't give it to the candidate, then I would suggest to you that we're not violating anything, because we're preempted by law from doing it. So I would just leave the motion that was originally passed by a majority of the council with the modification that I have just made, which says, "All it takes to get on the list is for somebody to make the request," and they're put on the list.
Okay, well then, go ahead and do that, and we'll, we'll do the decorum policy and see what happens.
Right. Madam Clerk, are you, are, are, are you aware of what I'm wanting, wanting to do?
I believe I understand what the modification was to the original request. That you would modify it so that the only requirement would be that someone would walk in with a written request stating they wish to be on the list, and that would be accepted and place them on the list.
Right, that, that they want to be on the list.
And that would only be...
That they have met the requirements. They, they state that, not, you don't check it out. They say, "I have met the requirements, I want to be on the list," and sign their name, that's it.
And that that would be only on those folks who are currently incumbents.
Correct. I would add candidates, but the city attorney tells me I don't have that option.
Well, you do, but you would need to do that by ordinance. That's the only...
I don't want, I don't want to go there. I want to go strictly to a voluntary, internal, um...
And, and the only issue there is, as pointed out, you will be in the position of highlighting the names of some members of the council and leaving others out who do not choose to participate. And while this is not a mass mailing, so it doesn't fall within that, that does raise a differential treatment between the councilmembers.
Well, in other words, you, I, I think you have your own view on this, Ms. Biggs. The, you, you mentioned in your report that the people on the list would be rewarded. It's no matter of rewarding the people on the list, it's a matter of information for the public. I might add, in knocking door to door, I have met people who said, "Edgerton, I'm not going to vote for you, because I don't like your position on development. I want more development." So by being on the list is not necessarily a reward. They see him with a name on the list, and they may say, "We're not gonna vote for that guy."
I, I have to tell you, I do have a personal opinion about all of this. My opinion is that nobody should be able to contribute unless they're a living person within the jurisdiction.
That what?
That no one should be able to contribute except a living person within the jurisdiction. But the Supreme Court does not agree with me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a couple, Mr. August, can I take the public's commenters on this item before you speak?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yes, Your Honor. Ann Pica?
This is the first time I have seen this city council take steps to be transparent with the public on campaign contributions. The public has a right to know how or if the contributions from developers to any candidate's campaign will or does have an effect on the councilmember's vote. No one in the public is naive enough to think that a developer is handing money to a candidate's campaign who does not expect a favor in return. Private citizens donate to the campaign because they want the person in office who they feel will do the job for the city and themselves. The same cannot be said of developers, and if that puts them in a bad light, so be it. The truth is the truth. I hope that the majority of the city council will pass this amendment to the rules of decorum with regards to campaign contributions and gifts disclosure without any changes to the motion. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Tom Thurman.
Good evening, or good night, or good morning, and it's getting close, isn't it?
It is.
My issue was, was paragraph three, and Councilman Edgerton addressed that, basically eliminated it. I think the public will take care of, of anyone that makes that pledge and is not honest about it, they'll be able to see it. You could assist the public by making the seven hundreds and the four sixties easier to find on the website. They are there, but it's very difficult to find it. You've got to go through three or four steps to get to it. If you just put a, a city clerk byline or tag on there, a button, so you could click on city clerk and see all, all the items she covers, it'll come up for them. It'll be a lot easier for them, for them to locate that information. I think that information is important for the public. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Ron Sullivan.
We'll open it up here in a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ron Sullivan. I voiced my opinion the last time, and thank you tonight for the notoriety, Deputy Mayor. I do listen, and that's why I spoke. Anyway, this seems to be a little bit on the, going over the edge a little bit on this particular decorum item. We have twenty-six cities in this county, there isn't anybody that has anything like this. And before you do something like this, you might want to take it to WR Cog and let WR Cog tell you whether you're gonna meet violations or not. I had the opportunity to have somebody familiar with ethics and campaign finance and the campaign laws in the state of California. The only thing that is not challengeable in this particular ordinance is item number one. I think everybody agrees that that should always be on there. Actually, when I talked to this statewide attorney, he voiced everything that your attorney said, and that this is in violation of state campaign laws, the way it's written. And you do put your city clerk in a difficult position. And I believe that you would have to have an ordinance, he didn't say that. But when I, when I went over this, he, he kind of smiled, and he said, he didn't know what the decorum thing was, but he says, "My guess is, they're trying to do this under the guise of transparency, but it goes against campaign finance laws in the state of California." So before you do something, you should do yourselves a favor, and whether you do it through WR Cog or you do it through a special counsel that can give you some advice before it gets challenged here, because it will get challenged the way this is, because it's grossly unfair to the whole political process. I know this is politics, as, as everybody says, you all get, you all get elected through a political process, but at some point, once you're up here, it becomes governance, and not to play politics on what an incumbent can do and can't do, and what someone that wants to run for an election on the outside can do or can't do, because you limit their ability. Thank you.
Are there additional speakers?
Yes, I want to...
Are there additional speakers?
I want to comment to that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, I put Mr. August on, I, I put Mr. August on hold so we could hear the rest of the speakers, and I'd like to proceed with...
I just want to respond to the speaker.
Yeah, we all, we all want our, I, we all have some comments to make, I hear, think.
I wanted to respond to him, too.
I want to respond to what he said, because he, he stated something that's flat-out untrue.
All right, well, then, let's have Mr. August go first.
Well, two real, two real quick comments. I wanted to comment to what Mr. Thurman said. I took a survey of, from people on my internet, asking them questions about, was it easy to find our four sixties and four seventies? And, and I'll bring that up, Tom, probably not tonight, but we'll, we'll, at the end of the meeting, went for agenda items. But the best one I came up with, that gentleman's in the audience, right, they gave me a recommendation, and said, "You know, next to the pictures we have on the website, put four sixties and seven hundreds right there, that people plug in on it, so we can, we'll, we'll talk about that later." As far as Mr. Sullivan goes, every, Mr. Sullivan, you're making me give comments all the time on you, and I respect you a great deal. Mr. Edgerton's an eighteen-year veteran of a council in Long Beach, California. He has more experience in this stuff than you or I or anybody on this council. It's his motion, we're trying something that's different, and even if we went to WR Cog, do I have any doubt in my mind they would say it was illegal? Don't even bother. So the idea, if somebody wants to challenge us on it, and they can make a good case, as far as lawyer goes, lawyers are wrong fifty percent of the time. So why not try something for a change and see if we can get away with it, if it helps the system, helps people look up on the, on the internet to find out where people are getting contributions? What, what does it hurt? If somebody says it's wrong, we'll change it. But this idea that everybody knows everything, we can't do this, we can't do that, let's be innovative and try something different.
Mr. Edgerton.
Right. First of all, Mr. Sullivan, I want to make sure that this doesn't get personal. I first met you with Joan Spartman. I respect a lot that you do. I respect and appreciate your service on the board. You're not correct in reference to the city clerk. I just deleted the city clerk from any and all responsibility, that's number one. Number two, this does not affect any campaign finance laws. It, it is, it doesn't oppose any of them. If it were, the city, city attorney would advise us, but I am familiar with the law and know that when a council wants to voluntarily regulate itself, it can do that. All the majority is doing is saying, "We want to make this information that's already here more available to the public and easier to understand." If a minority on the council disagree with us, they can continue to collect funds from developers, and they can continue to spend it, but it's gonna become a whole lot more obvious, and the public deserves to see that it becomes more obvious. That's all where we're coming from.
Mr. Denver.
I think that a lot of stuff has been misspoken here. You do have the city clerk working, she does have to monitor this.
No.
Yes, you can let me talk, or?
I guess not.
Well, you're making...
Well, just you talk. Go ahead. What am I gonna say?
Well, I'm gonna repeat again, I don't want to get hoarse. The city clerk monitors nothing. The city clerk has no responsibility other than to put a name up on a list when she, it's a request.
That's what I just said. She has to put the name up on the list. She has to monitor this, keep track of it, put it up, when somebody tells her to put it up, take it down, she keeps track of it all. But more importantly, the city is doing this. The city itself has a sight that is in favor of certain councilpeople and against certain councilpeople. But the most important thing is, is I'd like to ask the city attorney, if I could, supposing that a, that developers, those evildoers, the people who build Menifee, decide they want to take out one of our city councilpeople, and they decide that they're gonna take out Mr. Edgerton because he's the one who, he, is, is against growth.
They try.
So they, so, so what they do is, is they give money to a candidate who cannot be on your little list, can't, you won't even know, and certainly won't be on that list. Are you not making a position on the, on the, on the council, a negative position as compared to people who are running against him? Aren't you setting us up to be taken out? Two, if, if a, you, you've used the word developer all the time. I assume that when your mother gives you a hundred and fifty-one dollars, well, you don't have a mother, when you, when your daughter gives you a dollar...
I was hatched.
A hundred and fifty-one dollars, does her name go up? Yes, it does, right? Everybody's name goes up. So if you collect money from anyone, it goes up.
Right.
The, the last thing is, is that this is, this is going to be challenged. I give you my word that the development community immediately will challenge it. It's gonna make us look stupid, and it makes us look anti-business. The only reason for this is politics, and I, and it's just pure, everyday politics, because all the information's already up there. And so they're, it makes us look stupid. The, the last thing I want to say is that I want you to understand that it's going to be questionable about taking money. You have a bunch of stuff in there about if a person comes up from such and such a company, and I, that, and I take two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty-one dollars, whatever it is, from him, I can't vote. But if he is, if his partner gave me, gave me that money, or another company that he owns, I won't know. And so you set me up to be able, so you can go through and, and somehow figure out at great length which person is the... which person is the partner with who and all the rest of it. And then I'm busted. My name comes off the list. You question us about that. It's impossible to know every developer by their name. And when you set this up, they're going to use their cousin and brother in names and it's going to be all the same. If there's a $150 limit, you're going to have a developer give 75 of their people $150 so you can get the money. It's just stupid and I'm going to vote no.
Okay, I have a couple. Mr. August?
I know.
Yeah, I just... I... Go ahead, Mr. August.
I'm not into this. I'm going along with Mr. Edgerton because he's wiser and has more experience. Let me tell you something. Developers, business, so on and so forth. I don't care how much money Mr. Denver takes from anyone. He can take a zillion gazillion dollars. And he can vote on anything he wants. But I want him to tell the people before he votes on it he took the money from the people.
I'm not going to.
That's exactly my point. I want you to.
But I'm not going to.
Then you don't have to. It's voluntary, remember?
Right.
All right. But Mr. Sullivan said the other night at the meeting before last, he says, "You know, Greg, if you've got a problem with Mr. Denver, you know what you do? You call him out in front of the city." I don't want to do that, Mr. Sullivan. I want the person to do that. I don't want to turn this thing into a dog and pony show every night somebody votes on something. I want him to tell them. Mr. Sullivan says, "Greg, you call him out on it. You out him." Is that what you want, Mr. Sullivan? Is that what we want up here?
Mr. Edgerton?
Yeah, since this was originally my motion, let me make something very clear. The problem is not with the developer. The problem, if there is one, is with the elected official. The developer did not swear that they were going to uphold the office and have a fiduciary obligation with the citizen. The elected official did. To suggest that something is negative because you're going to expose it to the voter seems to me a testimonial that you are aware what you are doing is not something the voters want you to do. And again, all we're... We have three members on this council who do... Who already follow every single item of this decorum policy that's being proposed. And the other two can follow it if they wish, but it is voluntary. They don't have to. Bear in mind, they'll be opposing the decorum policy and they should be able to defend that. And then let the voter decide. That's all this is trying to do. Let's make it more obvious to the voter and let the voter choose.
Mr. Denver?
When you ran in your elections, you are a wealthy man. You drive a very nice Cadillac car. You drive a very... You have a very nice house, very nice wife, by the way. And you have enough money so that you can just pay $15,000, $14,000 and run your election. What about the person who comes in and doesn't have that much money? And what if that person has to go around and collect up money or otherwise they can't run? How about the kids that are the young people who took your class and they'd like to run and they're starting out and they have some time? Or somebody's wife and they want to run? If they take the money and they get on the council and they're not rich, like you, then they can't compete with you and all your money. Why not make it equal?
Well, you make some good points, Councilman. But I would remind you, the first time I ran, I raised no developer money and I didn't spend $14,000 or $15,000. I think I spent $4,000. The last time I ran, and I'm not knocking the BIA for this, but the BIA and the developer community targeted me. They backed a candidate against me. And they came at me with all barrels. And because I have taken a position that I won't take developer funds, I was at a big disadvantage. My opponent outspent me three to one. Now, I am not rich. I am not poor. But I cannot and will not take from my wife and my family what it would have taken for me to match my opponent. Did the citizens know that? They should. They should know who's backing whomever it is. And I would agree with you. On the 19th, we're going to look at public financing. The city attorney has already stated that may not be a possibility for a general law city. But I want to investigate ways to help people who don't have the money. But I can tell you this, my opponents have outspent me in the last race for Rita One because they had developer money and I had to spend my own money and I am not rich.
My turn. Can I have a turn?
Yep. No.
Thank you for waiting. I haven't had a turn yet.
Well, you ready to go? I'm going to go last. I'm going... I'm exercising the privilege of chair and I'm going to go last. Do you have something to say? Say it now.
Yeah, I will say it. I spent $600 on my last election.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What about the... Oh, never mind. I won't talk. It doesn't matter. All right. I have a couple of challenges with this because, you know, I disclose my campaign contributions. I disclose my expenditures. That's done. That's done in accordance with the Political Reform Act on the 460s and it's done on the... And the gifts are disclosed on the Conflict of Interest Form 700. I absolutely agree that they need to be more readily available up on the website. They're already there and I don't think we need council action to put those... To transfer those to the front page. Moreover, I see what you're... I understand your point about maybe linking them under our pictures, but there are other... We need to do it differently because there are other people that are required to file the 700 form. All the department heads are required to file. There are certain consultants that are required to file the 700s. There are entities in the city that are required to file 460s if they create a committee or something like that. So if we're going to put the council 460s and 700s up there, everybody's stuff has to be up there. Candidates, council members, et cetera. So I have absolutely no problem. I'm not ashamed to tell everybody that I can't afford to fund my own campaign either. And I mean, me and Wally had a conversation about this a couple of weeks ago about every time I opened up a committee, I would loan myself $3,000 bucks and it gets paid back as I take in donations. And he acknowledged that to jumpstart my campaigns. During the last campaign, you know, Mr. Edgerton and Mr. August and I, it was no secret that we were all running together. And this is just a little bit... I understand. I respect your opinion and what you want to do, but I just disagree with you on this because you're being a little bit disingenuous with this when it comes to me. Because out on the campaign trail, every time we had a chance to talk to voters, you would say, "I don't take any... I used to take money from developers. I don't do that anymore. That's your choice. No problem." But this guy right here, Scott Mann, he's running citywide and it takes a lot of money to run a citywide campaign. I don't fault him for taking that developer money. He needs to run a citywide race. So with respect to the pledge and the policy, I obviously am not going to support it. I already filed what I'm required to file. And there have been votes that I have made that have gone completely against those who have given me money. To give you an example, the BIA. The BIA gave me zero money during my 2012 race. They gave me a contribution after I won, okay? But they lobbied me hard, hard for that user... To not approve that user fee schedule. And I said, "Tough." We hired a consultant and we did this user fee study. And this fee schedule is over 14 years old, inherited from the county, and we need our own. And we absolutely needed our own. And I'll do it again if I'm faced with the same set of circumstances. I'm going to give you another example. Mr. Womble and Larry Markham. Each one of those men gave me a $250 donation in October of 2013. Their project... I'm not... The Womble project is over here next to the LDS church on Bradley. And I went against what they wanted to do. I voted for lower density of their property on that project. And there's email dialogue going back and forth between them and I at the time. Moreover, the... There's other protections for voters in here. For example, there's something called an ex parte disclosure under AB 1234 that we're all required to state. If there's an agenda item that comes up here and any one of us have met with an applicant, a developer, a homeowner, whomever, we are required to disclose that ex parte discussion before we hear the item. Is that not correct under Assembly Bill 1234? It's a conflict of interest protection that we've all been trained on. So I respect and understand what you guys are trying to do. I just disagree. I won't participate in it and I'm going to be voting no. And at this point, let's entertain a motion on this decorum policy.
Scott, when... I'll remind you...
Oh, we have other speakers. Do we have speakers?
Yeah.
There's a speaker.
Yeah.
I don't know. He was raising his hand.
Scott, I would remind you that...
Anybody who wants to speak.
Yeah. Let's go. Go ahead, Mr. Edgerton.
That... When you ran for mayor, it was a new position. You were running against Darcy Kinsey, who was heavily funded by developers. There was an assumption that you would take some developer funds. But I think that if we can get candidates that will not take developer funds, we would be better off as a city. And when you start taking... When I look at your 460s and now just about all of your money is from developers and 90% of it is from Newport Beach. And I strongly have a problem with that. And I think the voters would, too. But let's let the voters decide. But to Mr. Denver, I don't have a political position, Mr. Denver. I don't have a business. I'm not a candidate. I'm not going to be a candidate in the future. I am going to be active in the future after I'm off of this council. But I am pushing for something to see if we can get a particular policy for the city of Menifee, which is more stringent than some of the cities around us for the benefit of our taxpayers and our citizens. And by golly, I'll bet if we can get it passed and get it working that the activists in those other cities are going to demand the same thing for their city. I think the whole country is getting very tired of what appears to be their politicians being bought.
Well, I am not bought. We don't have a conflict of interest. The Supreme Court and several other court cases have ruled that it's not a conflict of interest. You know, for several reasons. I'm going to continue to do what I think's best to run a campaign. And at the same time, I am going to continue to serve this city in my current capacity for as long as the voters will allow me to serve. And I would hope that after tonight that this body gets back to the good works that it did in 2013 and start getting to the other issues that are listed towards the end of our agenda and advance good public policy. Did you say we had another... One more speaker? Somebody wants to speak?
Yes, I'm sorry. When there was a great deal of interest in responding to a speaker, one got overlooked. I'm sorry, Randy Williams.
Yeah. Oh, please, gosh. Yes, absolutely. Mr. Williams. Now that we... Everyone showed their cards. And oh, by the way, Mr. Williams gave me a couple of campaign donations, too, in 2012. Oh, yeah.
So did I.
And so... In fact, the only person up here on this dais that didn't give me a campaign donation was Mr. Denver.
From who?
From you.
You guys were posing each other.
So please, you know, we're jesting because it's already... It's February 6th now. And I think we've set a new record with the council meeting, so please proceed.
And if you can speak into the mic, because he speaks low.
Well, my wife asked me if I came here tonight to please ask this council not to do away with the Valleywide Park System. And so I wanted to honor her request and at the same time, tell you that I do support it, taking it over. And therefore, as a city has a divided park systems, I have a divided house. But my wife...
You're coming up here telling us your wife wants it one way and you want it another?
That's correct. She has a lot of anxiety.
Now, just to be clear, are you speaking on this agenda item? Because we've already heard that agenda item.
I understand. I just need to make it because I like to honor my wife at all times. So that was the end of the comment on that.
All right.
But on this issue tonight, I do have very lim... I have some... I have limited information on it. And it's not a position I normally like to be in. I like to digest the staff report, do research and come prepared with more thoughtful comments. But given that I didn't have that and given the importance of the subject matter and in the absence of that, I thought I would at least share some thoughts. And when that happens, I normally like to rely on principles. And so I'd just like to share some comments, premonitions, if you will, at this point, some notes I've just jotted down here tonight about this subject, using principles as my guide. And one of those principles is transparency. And I always admire people that where their hearts are open and I know that person inside and out. You can't always do that with strangers. I've always thought it'd be nice to buy a used car and have the person tell me that this little problem with the engine and that little problem with the engine. Let me know all the flaws that they know that they normally would withhold from me trying to get the most money out of the car. And I know Councilmember Denver might say that's stupid, but it may not get the most out of the car. But I do find it refreshing when people are that open and honest. And I do believe that when transparency is increased, so is good governance. And the greatest asset for democracy is an informed citizenry. And I was on the school board. There was no disclosure for campaign contributions and you had to go down to the registered voters or... Is this my time blinking already?
No, you have time.
One more minute.
Well, I don't know when it started because... But we added a link on there for them to get quicker information that was without much problem. As somebody who is a developer, as somebody that's been elected, as somebody that gets involved in campaigns and donates money to good candidates like Scott mentioned to him and others, I want to be very clear that I unequivocally believe that those people that give, as well as elected and candidates that receive, can do that without being unethical or anything improper. And good people deserve good support. And... But that doesn't necessarily mean that it always has to be monetarily. Grassroots can be a more honorable means of showing community support.
That is your time, Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
Are you in favor of this motion or not?
Well, I'm...
He hasn't studied it. He doesn't want to weigh in.
No, I just was going to admire... Basically, state the council that I admire them considering it and that I'd hope through your deliberations that you would come up with a very optimal policy and new standard, if you will, for municipal transparency. And I just... I applaud what the attempt is to do here and the issues that are being debated. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate you hanging in there. And I apologize to you for almost losing an opportunity to speak. Can we have a motion on this agenda item, please?
Yes. I have a motion to pass the... What was placed before the city attorney last week to be on the agenda this week with the modifications that I have so described in reference to how it would get on the list from the city clerk so that she has no decision process. It's just simply responding to a written letter, making the request, stating they have met the recommendations and to be pleased put on the list and then to sign their name to that. And for clarification, this is not about, Scott, conflict of interest. This is a position of ethics in reference to transparency. Nobody's talking about conflict of interest. That's up to the voter to decide. So that's my motion.
Are you also removing, then, the inquiry that says that if you took more than $150, 150, you must explain why that is not a conflict of interest?
Um, yes, I, in other words, the motion is the same. If a project comes before me and I've taken money from a developer, then the people should know that at the time of my vote. So, I should say that, uh, I've taken money from that particular developer. And, uh, if I still wanna vote on it, that's my position, let the citizen decide whether it's appropriate or not.
But this is voluntary.
Uh, it has to be voluntary. Yes, of course.
Well, as, as written, though, uh, what it says is that the, there must be an inquiry, and the council member must either explain why there is no conflict of interest or recuse himself. If you wanna take that out, it is-
No, no, that's our decorum policy, which any council person has the right to accept or not accept. There's, there's nothing binding about it, counselor.
I, I understand. So, I guess what you're saying is, even though you asked that question, if the council member declines to say anything, either to say it's not a conflict or to recuse himself, nothing happens?
If the council sets a decorum policy and any member of the council refuses to follow it, then of course the majority of the council can refer to that and comment on it.
Okay, but there's no penalty for it?
No, not, in fact, as I said, some of the things you suggested would put people in jail and fine them. I want my colleagues to be transparent. I don't wanna put 'em in jail.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion as modified? Second. Roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, was the second from Councilmember Furman? Thank you. Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Until we're challenged, aye.
Councilmember Denver.
No.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Nope.
Thank you.
So, uh, to make the record straight, that is now part of the city of Menifee's decorum policy. Let us hope the council will follow their decorum policy.
Let's hope. I have no intention of doing so. Um, on to, uh, agenda item. We have, uh, thirteen point one, city attorney reports.
You heard that.
As requested by Mayor, Deputy Mayor Edgerton, uh, and as actually is, is my usual, uh, procedure with cities, uh, this is a mid-year budget review. Uh, it's a little unique because my tenure here has been for a calendar year, but the numbers that we have are fiscal years. So, we have worked through that, and I hope you'll find this helpful.
This wasn't-
The goals, of course, are to assure that the city receives the highest quality legal service in a cost-effective and responsive manner, and to reduce legal costs by taking a preventive approach to the delivery of legal services. And finally, to effect a smooth transition from previous legal counsel to assure future continuity and consistency. Uh, since 2008, as you are aware, the city has been represented by several law firms and attorneys. Legal costs have varied due to litigation challenges, organizational disputes, and management philosophy. So, there is a variation in what's been covered. Certainly, there were issues with startup, and as you know, as we went through a variety of ordinances this year, there's been some cleanup work that, that has needed to be done. Uh, our contract provides that the city is billed at the rate of 175 per hour for the first fifty hours of general municipal representation. That basically covers most of our office hour time and council meetings, except for this one because it's two days. I'm sorry, that was a joke. After the first fifty hour standard is reached-
It is.
-all other general municipal work is billed at a blended rate of 185 per hour, and all specialty work is billed at a blended rate of 225. So, most of the work is billed at, basically, the 185. And that's usually my time, and that's Mr. Kwan's time. 225 occurs if you're talking litigation and that kind of thing.
Oh, God.
There's no charge for travel costs or time, uh, other than mileage. There is a mileage cost. The, this is the fiscal year review, and if you see, it starts in 2009. General city attorney, special counsel for litigation and claims, and special counsel code enforcement, as well as, uh, the total for the period. Uh, you began with a, uh, opening, uh, budget, basically, of 446,000. It reduced over time, uh, and was lowest in 2011, 2012, uh, and then increased in 2012 to 2013 to still under, uh, 350. And the current period, which is the fiscal year, two, 2013 to 2014, it's currently at 254. I've noted the special counsel costs there, and you see them, of course, in code enforcement, and that those specifically refer to, uh, the DePere for, firm that has been assisting the city with the Wooden Nickel Ranch matter. Uh, this is a comparative cost of neighboring legal city, legal, uh, services. Uh, City of Marietta has a hundred thousand people. You can see that their budget is somewhat higher, although it's been lower in some of the years. And, uh, City of Temecula, Temecula has been, again, higher. City of Menifee has run consistently, uh, lower than others. Uh, City of Hemet is huge, but that's because they have a full-service fire and police department. And that's a little bit of a distortion in terms of the overall cost. City of Indio is higher. City of Lake Elsinore, which is smaller in size, is lower. I'm not sure that we have all of the bond work, though, that, that they do. Some of these, uh, numbers, they were all taken out of the audited returns for the, uh, various cities, but some cities bury legal fees in the, in the departments. And we try to get the ones that reported as, close to the way Menifee does as possible.
Well, clearly, if you have, if you have your own, uh, fire or police department, your legal costs are higher.
Yeah.
At least that holds true for Hemet. It doesn't necessarily hold true for Marietta.
That's correct. That's correct. Uh, one of the things we calculated was the per capita fee, because, of course, it makes a difference depending on the size, it makes a difference depending on growth mode, it makes a difference across the board on whether there's litigation and so on. These are the aver, this is the average cost per person for the 2012, 2013 year. And as you can see, Menifee is the lowest of the areas. Oops, what did I do? Ah, thank you. Um, uh, now, to, to show you what has happened in the last year, we put together some general information. Of course, we were providing general legal services, which includes attendance at the meetings and so on, review of ordinances, contracts, preparation of memorandum, uh, so on and so forth, administrative matters, including conflict of interest issues, Public Records Acts, personnel legislative updates, and so on. The, uh, planning-related services, of course, was the general plan, but also a variety of, uh, other things, including secret compliance, development of zoning ordinances, metal storage containers is in here, home occupations, housing issues, a variety of planning functions. And then code enforcement. Uh, general advice regarding code enforcement, there's several areas that we've been involved in. Enforcement on pending matters, uh, monitoring outside counsel with regard to Wooden Nickel Ranch, and the costs shown on the following chart, uh, on the chart that will come up is, uh, a total of 76,000 in fees incurred, uh, related to Wooden Nickel Ranch. And that's for the calendar year there. This is the division of the costs over the 2013 year, uh, allocated by department. And if you can take a look at that, you'll see that the general is about twenty-four percent. Uh, litigation is very small. I believe that's a three percent figure. Personnel is, uh, six percent. Planning is, uh, let me think. Planning is the eighteen percent. Public works is nine percent. Finance is six percent. Code enforcement is twenty-four percent. And enterprise fund is three percent, and ordinances, and that was a lot of the cleanup work we did, was five percent. So, that's how it breaks down in terms of your usage of legal, uh, fees. It's a, the good thing is that there's very little litigation. Projected attorney city costs for 2013, 2014, and I think this was in the finance, uh, report, the cost projections for the next calendar year are at 457.
Excuse me.
And that includes the, uh, additional money for code enforcement. And overall, the projected costs are substantially below costs for comparable cities in the area. So, uh, and our rates have not increased, and we're not, we're not scheduled to increase them. And there we go. We're privileged to be here and hope to carry on.
Can you go back to the comparative city chart? Just for, I just, for a, a point of discussion and clarification in my own mind.
The fiscal year one?
That one, that's good.
Okay.
Um, for le, okay, for legal services that the Parsac Agency engages in on our behalf, do these figures reflect any of those costs, or is it just up to our $5,000 self-insured retention limit?
It is just up to our limit.
Okay, so there are, there are legal costs beyond what's reflected here, but they're being borne by the risk pool.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. I had no, any, any questions?
And this, this will be available on the website, and you have a hard copy in your red folder.
All right. Thank you, city attorney. City manager reports.
I have one item, and unfortunately, it was a huge celebratory item, and they've all left. I hold in my right hand a work order for two signs-
For the Sun City sign.
-on the I-215 freeway.
Give it to him so he can put it in the newspaper.
Mr. Jonathan Smith and his staff can take the ultimate credit for this because this guy got this done. Sun City, a community of Menifee, one sign just north of, uh, McCall on the southbound side, and one sign just north of Newport on the, on the northbound side.
Is it, why don't you put this on the nineteenth?
Well, I'll, we'll bring it back and do it again. Uh, you can see on your monitor where the locations will be, what the sign looks like. It is brown, the historic sign that we initially talked about getting. It's not the big green crazy sign way up high, but it is the historic, uh, brown sign.
And if you would, if the council does not object, rather than having that in the manager's report, uh, why don't you put it under presentations at the beginning of the agenda for the nineteenth?
It's a great idea.
Okay.
By the way, there's a Sun City sign that the arrow points to the left there. You need to take that down because it's-
Got that, Mr. City Engineer?
Arrow sign for Sun City.
Yes.
Why are you keeping that? Why didn't you tell me?
It just came up today, 2:5. We, we just got it done.
Give, give Mr. August a copy of that.
There you go.
What kind of wine, what kind of, what kind of wine are you drinking?
Tonight? Let's see.
He's, he's an actor. He can afford his own wine.
The last item I have is, uh, I will be attending, uh, the League of California Cities, uh, city manager meeting tomorrow and Friday. I'm available by phone and email.
Wow, what time are you gonna get there? It's already morning.
Um, I was gonna leave tonight after the meeting and get there, but I think I'm gonna try to go home and sleep.
Okay, on to, uh, future agenda requests from council members. Mr. Furman.
Yeah, we're gonna go home. Uh, I wanna, uh, reiterate my motion, uh, on the concerns for the city managers, uh, for a closed session meeting to really discuss these matters in depth. I don't think they should be discussed in public, and possibly, uh, an additional request for a RFP.
An RFP for what?
For the city attorney.
I'm, I'm, I need, I'm, I'm confused as to what you're asking for. You, you, in one, in one breath, you said you wanna review billing-
Yeah.
-and then in the second breath, you said you wanted to do an RFP.
Can I say it in two breaths?
Well, I'm just trying to, what, what's the, I mean, do you want, if you're, it, do you wanna review the city attorney's billing? Yes or no?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and then are you asking the council to give you a second on doing an RFP for si, for, to float city attorney services?
Yes. Both.
Can we take-
Can be, can be discussed, they both can be discussed in a closed session meeting.
Are you commenting on that?
No.
Okay. Um, okay, I'm, oh, don't draw any decisions, Mr. Pressman. I'm gonna second this.
Okay.
Um, but I wanna make an explanation as to, uh, the reason for my second. When we began this, um, session of the council in, uh, December of 212, uh, Mayor Mann, you came to me and urged me in the strongest terms to, uh, bring on Julie Biggs. I didn't have a problem with that. What I wanted to do was to make sure that we did it as is usually done, that we have an opportunity to interview any number of, uh, potential candidates. Uh, and the agreement was, and I so stated it from the dais, that this is temporary, that at some point, uh, I wish to go out for an RFP. That would include the city attorney, uh, so she would be part of the RFP. This doesn't suggest we're gonna get another city attorney, but as I said to you at the time, I don't think, I, I don't think it's right, particularly, we have a new city councilman who has never been able to sit down and review the many opportunities that different firms might offer us. Um, and secondly, the whole council as a matter of policy should be wanting to make sure that from the standpoint of costs, which look pretty good, and this, and the standpoint of services, which may be broader, which may be different, after all, the taxpayer's paying for it, that we have a, uh, an opportunity, which we haven't had up to this point, of comparing and contrasting, as we usually do, whether we're talking about a city manager or a city attorney. So, I, I will second, um, I will second, uh, Councilman Furman's action with the understanding, this does not mean we're going to get a new city attorney, we'll get an RFP, we'll get people on board to interview and compare and contrast. The conclusion could be, we would have a different city attorney. The conclusion could be, we would have the same city attorney. The conclusion could be, we would have the same company with a different attorney. There are, uh, a lot of variations, but since this had been our intent, and it was so stated from the beginning, uh, I want to stick with what we originally intended, which I think is the appropriate thing to do, and I'm seconding that motion.
Excellent. I, I recall that same discussion, and I believe the, uh, city attorney also is aware that that was what the original intent was too, and that, uh, at some point in the future that her firm would also compete in that RFP process. And if you also recall, um, I, I recused myself from that vote, and you gentlemen unanimously, by a vote of four and O, brought, uh, this law firm on board to be our municipal attorney.
Point, point of order, um, you, um, did recuse yourself, although, and I, I'm not making any objections, but you strongly, uh, this was really, uh, myself and others trying to be very supportive of the new mayor.
Yeah, I know.
And, uh, and we did, we did support you, but when you get involved in urging your council to do a certain thing and you recuse yourself, your urging has negated your recusal, but I don't care about that. I'm just, that's-
Yeah, you're splitting hairs.
I, I, I'm, I'm just having fun, but your other point, four O, no. Uh, one council person, for a number of reasons, objected, and so it was, uh, it was three one.
I don't, I wasn't in the room, so I don't remember. Okay, um, so that's been seconded. I have a request for the February 19 agenda, and I hope that I would get a second. And this has to do with, uh, tribal monitoring of, uh, projects that come through the city and requests for tribal monit, monitoring. I would like the, uh, agenda item to reflect a discussion and possible action to designate the Pachanga tribe as the sole monitoring entity for, uh, issues of cultural significance in the city of Menifee.
I'll say.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I was gonna make that suggestion, too.
Good. We're on the same sheet. See, we, we get along on a lot of stuff. Um, okay, is there any other requests for agenda items tonight?
Well, I wanna know what the city clerk's serving for breakfast.
Ice cream. Ice cream. I hear there's leftover ice cream from the boys' house. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.